All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:31. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask that all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We've got the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask that our committee members and all who participate tonight to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Thank you and welcome.
Motion to accept the agenda?
I was just gonna ask the motion to accept the agenda. So, um, so move, do we have a second? So, move by Mr. Gilmore, second by Mr. F. Fonasenko. And I think we're gonna go first to walk-ins. Is there, oh, yes, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we all agree. Thank you. Walk-ins, do we have anybody who is here for a walk-in and that's something that's not on the agenda, something outside of the agenda? I don't see anybody even on Zoom or in the room, so we're going to move to the report of the town administrator. Jim?
Amy, thank you. Long time no see.
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna start with just two weather updates. We posted one this morning. Uh, we're having abnormally high kink tides Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week. Just completed some minor flooding in our low-lying areas. Had to be 11, 11.5, and 11.4, so please be on the lookout. In addition, this morning, the National Weather Service issued a high wind watch for tomorrow night into the Thursday morning from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Could be wind gusts 50 to 60 miles an hour. We'll be posting that advisory tomorrow morning, so if you're out about late tomorrow night or early Thursday morning, you might wanna use some caution. Uh, last night, Mr. Goodrich made the announcement, but for people who weren't in the meeting and might have missed it, I'll please announce that Taj has been awarded a $5 million Masterwork Grant from Carmel, Massachusetts, for the construction of the North Citrus Source System. Congratulations to Corey Miles, Karen Joseph, Kevin Capiti, Sean McCarthy, Will Branton, and our consultant for the project we were in current for their excellent work in putting this grant together. This is the second highest amount awarded by the state this year, so good work to everybody. That'll go a long way to help with that project. Uh, November 11th, Veterans Day, Citrus Post 144 providing free turkey luncheon, the help of the Voyage Restaurant to all Citrus residents and one guest. Additional guests are welcome at an extra $20 apiece. They need a comp by the end of the week, so please email Bob Callahan for reservations at recallahan@comcast.net or commander@citruspost144.org. Or you can call Jean at 617-842-0092. You all selected on your branch of service and the years you serve. Reservations are required and limited to 130. The Veterans Day, uh, Veterans Day, sorry. Veterans Day, uh, match will start at the flagpole, which will see descent at 3:33, first crash run at 10:45. Ceremony starts at 11 with a white people salute, the playing of taps, and singing the national anthem in invocation by the Chaplain. Ceremony is then moved inside of the banquet room, where POW MIA remembrance will be done and remarks by a notable guest. Cash piles available. Meal consists of a salad, roast turkey, stuffing, mashed potato, buttered squash, cranberry sauce, and gravy. Dessert is provided by Post 144, and Post 144's classic rock band will play 60 to 70 music after the meal. Once again, the Voyage Restaurant, our mark is catering the event and donating the food. Thanks to the Voyage Restaurant, Keith O'Callahan for helping out, so please get online. But then, Louis, you're right, congratulations to this great event. BPW update, it's really only one new from yesterday, then I'll update the board on. Um, the contractor for the Myer Beach parking lot is mobilizing this week. Right now, he is scheduled to begin work on the Myer parking lot Monday, November 10th. That's good news.
Oh, that's great.
The parking lot will be closed to use at that point, if we can park, you know, street parking lot, it's room. Uh, the other update I wanna get out tonight, so then we have a long meeting. Uh, the Citrus Food Pantry is facing unprecedented maintenance uncertainty as the government shut down its package SNAP benefits. They want residents to know that if you are at risk of losing your SNAP benefits, the food pantry is here to help. Food pantry is open to all Citrus residents, just bring an ID or proof of residency. Not only provide you food assistance in the form of fresh, shell-stable, and frozen foods, they will also provide you with information on other local programs where you can get extra support. So please help the food pantry during the holiday season. Their most needed items right now, stuffing, box-mashed potatoes, KDMs, cranberry juices, bread mixes, canned food cocktail, canned peewee of chicken and mushroom soup, hot chocolate, flavored oatmeal, Jell-O and Jell-O pudding cups. These can be dropped off from food pantry during operating hours, the bits behind the old gate school, Citrus Library, Village Market, Shaws, and the Sanctuary, current work. Also, find for the food pantry. You can go to citrusfoodpantry.com for more information. That's what I have for that very quick.
Questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess we're moving up next on our agenda, discussion of the photograph, the historical properties.
Right, which is just a continuation of last meeting, which was only last week. Yes, and Bob Chesky reacting with the Citrus Historical Society is here. They held a meeting today, um, and they have a sentence they wanna add in response to the board's concerns. And that was, um, the man house tenant expected to treat the property with respect, recognizing that as a historical site. If the tenant is interested in assisting the historical society with public interpretation or tours during open house events, society will gladly coordinate with the tenant to make those arrangements. And I did confirm that the, um, the whole house is not with paying rent, it is a studio apartment. And Bob, anything you wanna add to that? Seth, could you run me a block for us?
Well, you should be able to.
You should be able to give us a.
You, uh, just, it's a, it's a very small studio apartment, and that she basically lets us know if something has to be done. Little bit of oversight, she's not in the same class, I think, as Bobby Gallagher or Jill West as far as historical, but she does help us and, uh, I guess it's, she's been, has been a good tenant. So I guess that's all I can add.
I guess I have one other question, and that is, if she were to move out, would you move it toward a, um, like a different type of tenant? Would you have somebody that is doing historic, like a caretaker?
Yeah, if she moved out, we would definitely try to get someone with some historical interest in the building, hopefully, if we're good, which we try to do with some of our other buildings. She was there, um, she's been there for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, way before my time.
Yeah, okay. I guess that was, I, that was my concern, was that we had set all these rates for folks that were caretakers, and actually, like, there was additional benefits to the town, because it is a low rental rate. Um, so ideally, I would love for a person to get involved, and, but if she were to move out, I would also think we might wanna think about caretaker situation.
Right, but I think the way this is written, it's good for the circumstance at hand.
Right, okay.
If that were to change, then we could, should revisit that at that time and strengthen that leash a little bit more, more like the, I guess, my, but it's my.
And I, and I think I would agree. I don't think on the top of the week, I don't think I was under the impression that this tenant had been a long-term tenant.
Yeah, and I wasn't either, yeah.
So I didn't realize it was a longstanding tenant that's sort of been in a specific position, so I'm okay with the current language being sort of more voluntary. I think if this tenant were to move out, after, you know, being a good, long-term tenant, then I think the situation would probably necessitate some equity among the properties. So, thanks for.
Thank you, I appreciate you, Claudeon, Bob, and giving us such great information.
Okay, I'm actually at my press needs meeting now, I'm just gonna go back in, but thank you.
Sorry, Bob, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's always a pleasure dealing with you, thank you so much. Take care.
Motion?
What do we need? Uh, it's on page, you got it?
Move to proceed with the execution of the new leases with the existing tenants of the man house and White Keepers Cottage.
Second.
It's going to say goodbye, Sarah's all in favor.
Aye. Thank you and thank you for moving it up so we can get it done.
Yes. All good news. All right, um, we're fine. It's a traditional tide gauge at Driftway Park, Aspen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I had printed out some charts that I thought Comic-Con was in person, so you get them. Uh, but we also have a presentation.
A presentation?
For your interest. It's wood. Uh, good evening, so, um, I'm Alex Mansfield, I am the watershed ecologist for the New Superior Watershed Association, and the special regional coordinator for Aspen's National Estuaries Program.
Hi, I'm Sarah Voss, I'm a scientist at Woodsol Oceanographic Institution and also a Citrus resident, um, and also on the advisory board of the Northern South Rivers Watershed Association.
Uh, and really, this is, um, Sarah may be able to speak more of this, but it's, uh, Woodsol Oceanographic has developed a low-cost tide gauge that can read tide light in real time, kind of timely, given the tides coming in. I wish we had had this installed for this week, um, but it's a, it's a small unit that's low-cost, um, reads tide by looking down at the water level. They have a few three installed so far.
Yeah, so they're, it sits above the water rather than under the water, it's an ultrasonic sensor, sensing sound wave down and measures the time back to the device, um, so the data is transmitted back in real time to a publicly available website. Um, we've been putting them out, um, yeah, here's an example of the site. We've been putting them out around the state and the region for a few years, developing the technology, um, starting to partner with different communities and organizations. So we have a few in Hall, we have a few around Cape, up over in Connecticut, and, and we're really interested in this project and partnering with Aspen and Northern South Rivers Watershed to help understand how water levels changing and sort of marsh estuaries environment, which is why we're carbonating the Driftway Park.
Yeah, so the idea, probably go ahead here on the slides, uh, that's, this is what the title data looks like on the website, we go ahead again. Again, more detail on a specific website. Uh, and then the idea would be to install a unit like this on up here at the Driftway, um, self-contained, powered by solar panel, uh, which is the small unit on top. We only received permission to install this, uh, we shared the, uh, you can go ahead, that's, this is a, this is a lot of detail on how it works. Um, there's a picture of the, the Driftway Pier at high tide, um, so the water level rarely comes all the way up to the pier, it would probably sit on the, um, at the walkway level, looking down. Uh, and so really, we, we talked, that's gone on in line of 20 two weeks ago, they were fine with it, uh, but suggested that we talk to you about, just permission to install that. We would also be interested in putting on a small plaque that has a QR code to the website, so people can see that, and a little bit of information about who we're buying.
You just answered my question. It's probably last month or now.
What's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the units that are out now, so they're just in a small little plastic skeleton case, Woodsol team has contact information case, someone's curious for, if there's a problem with it. Um, but the Watershed Association, I think we'd wanna pop that a little bit to just have a little bit of detail, town's interest in the Watershed Association. And again, like a QR code and websites for people to look at the real-time data.
How long is it gonna be installed on that floor?
Theoretically, indefinitely. Um, so the project is long-term, see what will arise, entitled litigation, so hopefully forever.
So, one of my questions was, that pier is not planning to go anywhere, but if that pier were to, is it built, prepared, replaced?
When, where's that on the?
Yeah. It's, it's simple enough to uninstall and reinstall if there's maybe a high.
Yeah, it's just built it on, um, again, it would have contact information on it, so the town is working on it, just give us a call so we can pull it off. Um, it's, it gets surveyed in, um, with survey tools, so if it had to be moved altogether, that would be okay too, you can just put it to your location, resurvey it.
Yeah.
Times there has to be. Another question I had was, um, in terms of, I mean, it's obviously a weather tight box, but does, I, I assume that the plan is in for it to be high enough in estuaries in place that we don't expect waves and areas, but if it does get submerged or if it gets wet or what have you, it still functions properly, it doesn't have to be, at least be calibrated because of a storm or?
No, it's completely, it's built for the environment. Um, we've had one out in Chatham, another fish pier, for almost three years, and it gets waves, it can bring storms, wind to the summer, uh, has had no issues. Yeah.
And, and part of the, the project at large is to make these very portable, so that they can be damaged and replaced or, you know? The, the point is to be able to make it cheap enough if people have them.
Lots, lots of money everywhere.
Now, my final question was, would the plan be to expand on this at some point, other locations in Citrus, so you can coordinate, have types of title?
Yeah, we've talked about that a little bit, I mean, one of the reasons why we picked this location is because you need, obviously, a structure looking to come up down with water, and some of the other potential sites like 3A Bridge, you know, there's a tidal restriction at Davis Point, so it doesn't necessarily represent the bigger picture of the power from the river. So this is a good sort of water area, but it would be very interesting to look at, how those tidal restrictions or places much further up the river actually do change.
Yeah, I mean, one of the longer-term goals of the project certainly is to be able, because they're low-cost, to be able to deploy them in networks in communities and figure out where, you know, where they would be best, the day would be best, uh, to compare to other sites within the I community, so that's certainly something we hope to continue in our position.
One of the things we're talking about a lot as we talk about the, the Cole Parkway air project is, is that if we do certain things and we lift the seawall certain places, it can protect the, you know, frontal onslaught of the tide, tide goes around, right?
Yeah.
So, it would be interesting to me if these are expensive, long-term to look at, okay, we've done a project, or we're starting a project, how does that shift the tide, just like we covered, that was stormwater bylaw, right? You build a house, how does it push the neighbors' water? So it'd be interesting to me to see how the harbor water changes.
Yeah.
If we make, and make structures in certain places.
Absolutely. It's a good idea.
Just for my curiosity, Kevin, when are they gonna reboot that?
It is a, I believe it's on Capitol, uh, on that Capitol, um, CPC, and I, I just remember it being on CPC, I don't know when or anything else, I know Frank Snow's working on it.
Those were thought of improvements needed for Driftway. Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't mention that when we referred them a couple weeks ago, but, but again, it's easier enough to uninstall, I guess.
Yeah, the, the other thing about the, this particular site is there's a lot we'll learn this from, I think he's in, I don't know, he's there two years, right? So, I mean, you can have a, you know, an ID, you can multi-deep over records in terms of maybe the questions you're asking, but, but part of the goal of these devices is to be able to look at shorter-term variability, so like storm, a big rain event, a big storm surge coming in, um, the Northern South Rivers has a ongoing project in that area for the marsh, in terms of water restoration, in part with Citrus Ice Coast students, I believe. Uh, so there's a lot happening here right now, so even if it ends up being a short-term goal, I think there's a lot of, you can.
Yeah, it'd be a really interesting time to research for a week like this, pretty have these kink tides, that anybody in town could just log in in real time and look at, you know, how, how, how high that tide actually is out here, that's fun.
Right.
Claude, you stop.
I'm good.
You're good?
I think it's great.
You got it.
I agree.
Well, I love it.
I love it. We're good?
I think it's wonderful, I think it's great, awesome, I think we're all in agreement. There's no motion, I think, Jim, there's no, oh, got one, two simple questions, actually. Um, would be able to get access to the data and kind of follow what's going on there?
Yeah, it's in, it's in real time on the website, but you can also download the data, like.
Yeah, you'll be able to, you can download it or you can just look at it, right? There's a, a, a website that will be linked to on the sensor, but also we can share it to all, I think it's in the materials, we can, so.
That'd be great, if we could get.
Yeah, it's, the whole point is to be publicly available in real time, and also it's probably constantly.
That'd be awesome. The other thing is, I don't know, you'll be aware, you mass in person, doing a lot of the project in that area, drawing people, the entire area, and working down, so that they can map it all out. They've been creating mapping going on throughout that whole area.
Yep.
Yeah, nothing larger.
That's amazing.
We love a lot of explanation on that. That's great. Thanks for that.
That's great. See the data, that's, that's easy, right?
Yeah, and I think, and we have a unit ready to go, so.
Yeah, I think you need, maybe get it out.
The speaker next.
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Like four bolts.
Get right on it.
On and done.
Thank you guys so much.
Very good, love.
Thank you. Interesting. All right, Kevin, you're up. We'll run, we'll run it, all right? Oh, there they are. All right, this is Paige, what do you? Hold up, hey, where are you? Where are you?
How are you?
Great, I can hear it, making progress. All right.
Excellent.
So, yeah, take, take it away, tell us, uh.
Well, first, uh, just wanna thank you all, and I know at different times that they visit to their light, and, uh, that's really appreciated, and I know, yeah, so, so many people are working really hard on this project, so, yeah, being able to have you see it in person and talk to the site that you have been, um, a nice pleasure on our side, so just, thank you for that. Um, so we go to the next slide today. So, typical fashion, we'll run through product status, construction progress, and then the upcoming construction activities. We did include on the agenda today, a change order request, so we will be reviewing that in detail for approval, and then we'll close it out with our, you know, upcoming project meetings and have space for comments, questions. Okay, so just noting where we are today, uh, project submittals continue to come in, we have 598, those are, yes, posted, we have three open submittals, uh, one open RFI, so we're staying on top of submittals and customer information as they come in, continue to stay on schedule, so those dates remain the same, and I think we're 416 days to December 16th, so we're getting, we're getting there. Uh, and as far as percent progress, so as of our most recent pay rec that we've received from the contractor, we're 51% on by payment, construction progress, and by time, and this is against final completion, is 43%. We have some nice drone photos that the, the town has provided for us, and this really gives a nice view of, of the construction progress as well. So this photo really focuses on the facility, um, you can see where the, uh, process tankage is all located, on the left side of the facility, right in the middle, you can see our manganese contactor tanks, and then on the right side are, um, operations space and the garage, uh, areas.
Sure. All right, so just want people to notice that, those tanks, they're like L and G tanks that moved down to be three, the brown water, one of the biggest companies, just a book that I know, that's what we didn't have, that's what we're gonna have, it's gonna help, that's great. Those are our friends to help with our water stuff.
Absolutely. This zooms out a bit more, so you can see our, um, sand drying beds, so that's where residuals, um, will settle out and be removed, um, as part of like an operation maintenance protocol. Okay, so noting progress to date, so we have formwork, uh, rebar concrete placement, 90% through, uh, this project, if you recall, we have 600, or 6,000 cubic yards of concrete that is being installed, so we're at 5,600 cubic yards installed today, so we're getting very close with getting that all, um, installed here. Masonry and steelwork on, uh, in the garage levels, we have mechanical work in the process area, so let's suppose we can show that work, uh, process tank delivery, onsite utility work, and then we've also started some work at Old Oak and, um, water treatment plant. Here, if you look at, uh, the photo in the middle, that's, uh, one of the, the slide gates for, uh, the tanks. We also have, um, the, uh, pipe gallery shown, so you can see all the tanks on the side, all the, all the concrete, really this gives you a good sense of how much concrete has really been, um, installed here and how much efforts it's taken. A few more shots here, so you can see the utility work, um, that's gone in, uh, and then also two photos showing the garage area inside the building. Now, like, things are starting to get enclosed, you're getting a sense for the, the size of the facility there. And upcoming, so we have, uh, as I mentioned, just a little bit more, uh, concrete work to be completed in November, we'll be finishing up masonry and structural steel, mechanical work, and the utility work at Old Oak and, uh, water treatment plant. So now, hands over to Rob, run through our change order request.
So, good evening, uh, my favorite player here, I guess, um, so, I wanna review the change order history, and then we do have a request, as you saw in your packet, for some additional change order, different reasons for the various things, I'll cover each one of those in detail, and obviously, a lot of questions, but where we are, as it stands right now, we've had change orders one and two approved through this board, uh, after getting approved by, uh, by Kevin and Jim. Um, those total, uh, changes one and two is about $490,000, which is 0.83% of approximately $59 million contract value. So, the DDP requirement on projects like this is that the town carries 5% in contingency, so you see that number at the bottom under original project contingencies of 2.9 million. Uh, we've used, as I said, 489,000, which leaves you with about 2.4, 2.5 million dollars in contingency, would be, uh, as we stand today. The, the request we have in front of you is for four additional items, so, again, I'll talk about this in more detail on the following slides. Um, yeah, there we go. So change order number three would consist of four different elements, uh, additional retaining wall and some duct bank work, uh, electrical and security system work, sand drying bed liner modifications, and sand, sand drying bed piping reroute. You see the dollars there, and I'll talk about it, but change order number three totals, uh, it approved $338,738.3, which is, uh, 0.58% of the contract value, and if you have all of that, that change order together with number one and two, you end up at 1.41% of the contract value. It's four mil to about 51.5% of contract, as we showed in prior slides. So moving through each one of these in detail, um, retaining, uh, so PCO has proposed change orders, so again, we group these together into one request to the board, you know, before you each time when this comes up, you know, we, we talk about them, we can negotiate them, by, by the time they get to your board, that is, and fully would be on the project manager, as well, uh, the town's team. So change order number one is retaining, uh, wall and duct bank work. The area to the far side, so the west side of the site, far side from the main road there, very congested underground, um, among the many underground utilities there is a national grid duct bank. We made some conservative assumptions during the design of what that duct tank is gonna be required by national grid, uh, and it came back, you know, even bigger, wider radius turns than what we had anticipated in our design. What that meant was we could either relay a bunch, a number of the other utilities to get the appropriate cover over that duct bank, um, however, some of the other utilities that already been installed would have been much more costly fixed. We negotiated with the contractor, worked back and forth, um, started at actually 49,000, what we're seeing here is 40,900, and that was for additional retaining wall on the side of the driveway, so that we can bring the finished grade up, uh, a few feet to make, uh, make sure there's appropriate cover on top of that duct bank as required by national grid. So, uh, again, that was the cheapest one, we worked very well with the contractor, they've been, uh, excellent to work with, I will say, I'll give them credit where credit's due, they've been very accommodating, the pricing is fair, um, we actually did some offsets here, you see it on the, the third bullet item down, that's actually, uh, it says includes electrical costs, we negotiated that out. The electrical cost themselves, or the electrical conduit itself was no charge, so that 40,000 is for the retaining wall, gets us what we need.
Thank you. Love you both. You make sure of it.
Yeah, I appreciate you negotiating that down, 'cause I know they came back with a higher, very, much higher.
Yeah, we do, again, the, the contractor is, you know, we deal primarily or solely with the general contractor, there's filed sub bids for various disciplines, um, so their work comes through us, we still bet it, but that, that negotiating goes on through the GC, and they've been, they've been tremendous, to be honest. So the second one, and this dates back to, you know, part of the reason I'm talking about is it dates back, well, before Lauren was involved with the project, as we were pushing this out to bid, we did not have access to the town's final security system design. That was a conscious decision we made, we made a conservative assumption within the bid package of $40,000 to cover, uh, as an allowance, to cover some of the proposed work related to that, at that time, not yet designed, security system. Again, that's by others, so it's not part of what it incurrence contract, it's not part of, uh, this contractor's work. However, to get ready for that security system install, certain things do need to be included in this contractor's work, conduits within slabs, for example, getting. Conduits within slabs, for example, getting some of the, prepping some of the wall for the ultimate installation. So, what we had included in our allowance originally in the bid was $40,000. It turned out to be, you know, second to last bullet item, $157,000, so significantly more. But now we have the benefit of having that security system design in hand. Once this contractor's gone, once we've moved beyond, you know, our role in the project, the town, you know, had separate money put aside to do the actual security system install, conduits now will be there. When you do the math, we had an ask from the contractor, which started at about $220,000. Got that down through negotiations to $157,000. We apply the $40,000 allowance that was in the original bid and end up at the $117,000.
Question on that. So there'll be still a cost on top of this once the building is able to have our security system installed?
That's correct, but it's outside of the work.
It's not even gonna, not another change order for you guys.
Correct.
Somebody's in the other direction. Right. The other direction.
When I first read, when I first read the panic buttons, I started thinking about Hollywood. I assume those are when there's something that's deemed, you know, a safety issue on the plant. There's a security stoppage that can be shut down and immediately stop flow and.
Or a slip and fall type of event, so an operator have to plan, you know, off hours can, you know, hit the button and make sure that they get access to rescue operations.
Yeah, police is the worst.
And so, probably maybe a question for Kevin as much as anybody, but when we talk about security systems and such, how much of that in the original plan is sort of mandated by DDP and the people versus the preference, the hard part?
You are required to have certain restrictions of where people can go, and that's what we're gonna do with the KICAT system. Mike's put together a KICAT system, so there's certain areas that only certain people will have access to. So maybe the operators can only get into certain rooms where the chemicals is stored. There'll also be cameras there, so somebody can't break in, and they would be able to track that. So part of it is with the, what we need for refinements for, just site safety.
So, again, under the scope of change for this item, really, this mainly comes back to getting ahead of the initial planning process and just not being able to get through it, because we didn't have.
We didn't know to what extent. For example, there were certain doors, what chemicals are, you know, put a plug number in at that time.
And so, so my follow-up question kind of comes across the change orders, which is, both times you've said, you know, we conservatively projected in the beginning, I assume that sort of falls under the RFP process. And I'm not picking on you guys, but since this is the third change order and it's a substantial one. When we say we conservatively projected this, we conservatively projected this. You know, usually when I'm talking to my wife about our budget, I wanna try to guess high and hope to come down rather than throw a low number in and have to go up. And so my question is, when we continually conservatively project this, you know, is that really a standard process? And if so, this is purely hypothetical, but from my own education here, when we're talking about an RFP process that goes up with multiple bidders, I sort of assume everybody plays that game conservatively bidding, so they can lower the RFP and try to win the bid. But how much does that end up costing us at the end by getting change order out, change order?
Still just on that.
Well, let's go, on this one, this one's, oh, this is partially on the board as well, at least. And the town board and on whatever, because we were the ones.
I recognize we changed some of the security, some of our cybersecurity and other things that go here. So we had to do our best guess to give them the number. So, I guess on this one, say, yeah, hold up.
How was there?
Yeah, so that, I'll let you continue with that, Kevin.
No, I'd like to clarify, it's not a change order to Woodland Inc., it's a change order to the contractor. So the contractor, we're gonna require extra cable to, say, get the chemical storage facilities. Or we're gonna require extra materials to get here and there with the electricians. And that's going through a filed sub bid and going through the general contractor. So, the RFP process as a security system, it is kind of out at that point, because we didn't have a footprint for the building, and we didn't know to what extent we were gonna have refinements for security at that point. So Woodland Inc., you know, put a plug in there and said, we're gonna carry $20,000 in the general contract, and by the time everything's done, it was a significant kind of, definitely.
The other alternative would have been to include a $500,000 allowance, and then once we have the real number to negotiate it out. So, you know, you pay the same amount for the same amount of work either way. It's just, we started with 40 in this case, the scope has kind of expanded. And this is, you know, again, that's been fully vetted, and we negotiated that down quite a bit from the original volley, if you will, that it became from the final subcontract.
Yeah, I look at this particular volley of changers, keep it in perspective, it's still within the contingency, well within the contingency of the OAL contractor. And if they're not saying anything, I'm not surprised at it. But it's, you know, we need to have the right security system. And until the building was finalized, design-wise, I think this is kind of appropriate. I don't see an issue here.
About 78%?
1.41% of the contract.
So you have, you have a question?
Uh, no.
Good. Sorry. Yeah, go for it.
Is the money for the security system coming out of the water treatment plant budget, or is it the?
Coming from the water. It's out of the five seconds.
Okay. And you're estimating that to be?
How much?
Sixty-five?
Yeah, this is a estimate.
My guess bids around what, close around what, sixty?
A hundred and sixty thousand?
We have 200,000.
What is it? Around, yeah.
Next one, all right. So SDB, sand drying bed, should have spelled it out there, sand drying bed liner modification. So, the, we showed it on the earlier slide, but those are those two trapezoidal long rectangular structures to the south end of the site. The design of those is to capture the residuals material, or the product that you're taking out of the water has to go somewhere. We don't have access to sewer here, so they go into sand drying beds. From the sand drying beds, you're able to recycle some of the water that drains out of it, because there's an undergrain system. We'll talk about that on the next slide. And there's a decant structure, so rain, snow melt can be decanted off the top. The name of the game there is to make this material as dry as you possibly can before ultimately have to have a truck come in, scrape it out, and hollow it up, you know, in your tank for water weight and your tipping fees, ultimately when that has to get disposed. In our design, we carried the erosion control geotextile all the way to the top of those burns. We do not show the liner going up. We believe that bringing the liner to the top, which is work that has already been done, we had the liner subcontractor out there on site. We wanted to bring that lining material up to the top, because the operators more flexibility in the storage, the amount of water that they can put into those lagoons. And, you know, to accommodate that, and that, now given the additional flexibility, we added additional liner ringing all the way up to the top of the slope. So now they have a full volume between one of those, those sand drying beds to utilize for residuals management. We vetted this, so this is not an additional cost, it's not rework. It's additional work that we elected to include in the project to give the operators more flexibility. The cost of that, $103,000 change was vetted versus the scheduled values for the original amount of liner material that was included in the original bid. So again, this is.
It's the same price.
It's the same price per square foot, we're bringing it all the way all the way.
Yeah.
Skip the last one. All right, we're good.
We did, we did steal that.
Yeah, that's the early picture, for those that are, you know, watching this, the pictures of the thousand words. This last one, and certainly the most embarrassing for me, is a sand drying bed piping reroute. So again, I mentioned that we're collecting clear water off the bottom of those lagoons. As the material settles, water, there's a sand layer at the bottom. We have an undergrain system that collects that water, sends it back to the head of the plant. That makes this a much more water-efficient plant, and makes long-term disposal of that position, excuse me, residuals material a lot, lot less cost. We, part of that system is a recycled pump station. That's that smaller building, so sort of between the main plant and those sand drying beds. That had been installed, the contractor noticed after installing about 150 to 200 feet of that pipe that, you know, the way we had designed it was incorrect. The slope having anchored the inlet pipe into that pump station was at a certain elevation, so that can't move. Coming out of that, the pipe slopes upward, and the way we had chosen the design was an error. It would have basically come out of that sand drying base. It would have taken the residuals material back into the plant without the benefit of filtering through the sand layer that's on the bottom. We asked the contractor to rework that. We reconfigured the piping that went into that system, and that was rework, because work had been installed. It then had to be undone. At this point, we're about 15 feet underground, there's utilities, the contractor installed afterwards. I look at this as a positive because they caught it when they did. So this is a $77,000 change order that we're asking for the Thune Construction to relay that pipe. And I have an offset there, so if you want to jump to the next slide before we have any questions. So, again, here's the sum, we talked about the four items, I'll come back to the $77,000 in a moment. The total change order for number three is $338,738, which is 0.58% of the contract value. When added to the change orders one and two, it's at 1.41%. So we still have, you know, after this, if this receives approval, we still have $2.107 million in your mass DDP contingency. And this is a math exercise at this point, because that is what would incur an error. I ran this up with leadership chain at my company. As you know, we're also working on the North Cituus sewer project. A pump station was included in that project, a pump station's building was not. It was clearly written in our proposal to the town, we were assuming an underground station. And working with Kevin and Jim, the station needs to be above ground, that's about $100,000 design effort. We're gonna do that at no cost to the town, to offset that $77,000 for the rework. And I'd like to go on record as saying, like, I ran, that was my initial thought, is we gotta do that for free to cover this. No resistance whatsoever from my leadership team. So is it the right thing to do? Let's put our reputation before our wallet.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and we've talked before, and I do appreciate you taking this and understanding that, you know, it was your error, but also making, you know, making amends for it. I do appreciate that. And I, my question, I guess this is to Jim, is it, I would want this in writing? And is this enough of in writing for our attorneys?
Yeah.
Because boards change and we all make decisions.
At a public hearing, it's being reported on.
Yeah.
Well, we can have a public hearing.
I didn't see that, my reputation.
We can have a public hearing before we decide things, forgotten in local society. I want to make sure that we're okay on that, but I really appreciate it.
We're all the same vocal projects, so, you know, it'll work out.
Yeah, I would say, I do appreciate that. It matters to me a lot that you're willing to own up to it. This is a lot of complicated stuff, most of us aren't experts in water treatment plants. It'll probably be, you have to try to sugarcoat it and full circle cover our eyes.
Although we're getting better at it.
Be experts by the time we're not.
I told you last Friday, I didn't know how to lie around here.
Yeah, but I walked through his cabinet and he's like pointing out stuff.
Oh, yeah.
As much as I do appreciate it, with the bigger picture in mind, when we talk about $338,000, we're talking about a total of, in addition to the others that's going on, was the total now? Six, 700 and something thousand dollars, where it was only 4% of the contingency. I know contingency means two different things. One is a contingency, because things always happen. Two is a contingency, because it's a requirement to make sure it's covered for taxpayers. But just from a record standpoint, if my math is right, just this change order alone, it is 339,000. Divide that into the 74, 184 homes that we have in town, that's $45 per household that we're on this change order. The three change orders together, we're at $110 total so far, just on change orders since we started the project, per house.
That's very conservative.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, just because it's allocated, doesn't mean that it's okay to have change order four, change order five, change order six, and change order seven. Whether it's a contingency or not, it's our responsibility to try and not have to dig into the contingency when possible. I totally understand this, I'm in support of all four of these items. But, we were talking just recently about the fact that when we did our tax recertification, reclassification, we were talking about a $187 tax threshold to each house in Cituus, and that was for a larger cross-town item. Well, this is a large cross-town item that's going to serve every town, household. So far, we're in, each of our houses is in for 110 bucks, each house. So I just want to, you know, put it out there that I understand change orders. When I built an addition on my house, I was way more than 5% when we were finished, so I get it. But, but, you know, there's a certain amount of understanding and patience and technical expertise. And there's also making sure that I elected to serve 20,000 people that are counting on me to ask questions. So, just want to put that on the record.
But may I say something, Chairman? Sure. The fact of the matter is that contingency on a project like this is specifically because of unforeseen issues and circumstances. Now, this fine gentleman has indicated tonight, to his credit, that one of these was a hoops. All the rest of these are fairly appropriate, because these conditions weren't really seen at the bid time and the style of them. So we're gonna have the contingency there. It doesn't raise the price to the taxpayer, because that's, that number's already in the $70 million approval.
Yeah.
So it's not an increase to the taxpayer at this time. Do we want to continue to make sure that everybody's accountable for the unforeseen conditions that affect the contingency expenditure? Absolutely, and I see by this evening's example that we're trying to do that.
I agree.
I have no problem with this emotion.
And I guess, just to go on that a little bit, so sleep better, I think of it this way, two-thirds of this, 100, the drying bed, the liner, I'm still obsessed with making sure we capture all that water, make sure that's there. But I'd spend that every day, I know it would be there, fabulous. Keep that water in there, make sure the liner's all the way to the top, all the way there. I'll spend that every day of the week to make sure that we get every single drop. We had to give the flexibility, so that one, and the $100,000 for giving back, so it's two-thirds of it.
Yeah, no, I know, I just wanted, just so people also can know that it's not, that we're not paranoid.
That you're doing.
Yeah, I know that we haven't overspent 110 per household. What I'm saying is, we still have $280 of that 5% threshold that I'd love to save you tax.
Yeah.
That I agree with.
I appreciate the time and space.
Is the pump station not going underground, it's the water table in our Cituus?
It's going underground to a certain extent. We didn't want to put it too low, because of those reasons, you have the water table, it's been led there, I don't recall the exact geotechnical. But, you know, again, that was our error, we could have, I'll say relatively easily, I don't know if there was a big rock helping there, but relatively easily put that further down in the ground and made those grade issues I mentioned go away.
So, I'll cut you off for a second. One of the things that we think aesthetically, it looks a lot better, there's a nice little building there as opposed to some tanks, tubes, and a generator and everything else. And we want to continue and keep the character of North Cituus, it'll be good as opposed to having things exposed. And then, and let it stop.
Yeah, I think, Rob, you were talking about the recycled pump station, not the, yeah.
You said something separate.
It's still, because if you drive down 3A, just for example, you get down 3A, there are water thing in Marshfield, and it's all exposed. You see all the pipes and, we don't want that in the middle of North Cituus. We want it enclosed in the building so that it looks nice, and it's not looking like the sewer pump station. We try to make it something all the time.
Jim's stuck in the drinking.
Circle cottage.
Well, it's still not gonna have parties or something, but, but, you know, we do want it to look, we don't want it to look industrial, I guess you could say. In the middle of the sun.
Look, I'll take those. Moved at the Select Ward Award the change order to the Thune Construction of Placedown, New Hampshire, for $338,738.3.
Second.
Mr. Dilmore, I'm sorry, but Schlegel offered in favor.
Hi.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for the other slide.
I guess, I'll just leave you with, you've seen all of this, but our next construction meeting, it's November 6th. Oh, actually, no, I said this, we booked it to Friday, so now we're meeting on Friday, so it should be the seventh. So we're still doing all the links from here.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you. Right.
Your review, one forty.
Pam, where are you?
She is.
Where are you?
Well, who are you? Hello, everyone. It's the time of the year, but it's, but it's, but it's.
Before we start, I just want to say that, thank you to you and your department, all the work. Fabulous, and we recognize all the hard work you've done here.
Thank you.
It's, it is, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I have a great department. It hasn't turned out, or it hasn't been easy.
All right.
Okay, um, yeah. No, no, do you have any specific way you want me to approach, or just kick that, well, can I about?
Just talk about, you're good.
Okay.
How do you some of your goals, good with that, the ugly, and just everything for the future.
Okay, great. I'm going to set up a treasury budget. Overall increase of nineteen thousand two hundred and eleven dollars from the FY twenty-six budget. Uh, it's mostly salaries, fourteen thousand seven hundred of that is salaries. FY twenty-seven includes contractual increases. Purchase of service has increased by six thousand dollars due to postage rates. Uh, all the postage is paid in my department. So, um, you know, all the mailings that we do, uh, affect that, and of course, the cost postage is rising. And then my materials budget decreased by fifteen thousand, I mean fifteen hundred, I'm sure fifteen thousand. Uh, a couple of goals for the next year is, uh, land a low value. Another one, we're going to update our website. And we're going to review the, uh, strategies of the new tax title collection process that was, um, approved in the court system, although it's still quite lengthy. And, uh, to be perfectly honest with you, uh, the new tax title law is, um, real crazy. And I can't even, um, go there, but we'll talk about that when we get there.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Um.
Good to know more, okay.
So, uh, some accomplishments, um, you know, we collected, uh, twenty, over twenty tax liens in FY twenty-five, uh, which is great with, um, we got our, uh, FY twenty-four taxes in before November first, so we don't have anything in tax title that's getting the new rate yet. And because it decreased from sixteen, sixteen percent in tax titles to now we can only get eight percent. Um, so I, you know, we, everything we have in there now is still at the sixteen percent this year, uh, for FY twenty-five. We are working on collecting that, uh, so we're doing our final repeat calls. I'm thinking about, um, Nancy and I will discuss it when we get down to, um, what's left still on the books. But we have up to three years to put them into tax title, and I'm thinking, just let them sit on the books for a little bit, uh, and get fourteen percent interest on that money instead of having to take the eight percent. Um, you know, but that'll be, uh.
Explain why the change.
Um, that's a good question, why the change. It was a, a court, um, decision. When, uh, towns took over a tax title, a tax lien, we were able to sell it. And the town was able to get all the money from the sale of the project. Now, um, with the new law, the money goes, the town's paid a hundred percent on, uh, the back taxes and any fees that have incurred. And the old owner of the property gets the amount that's left. So, um, now, and we've, and because it was sixteen percent interest on the tax title, they just think that that was outrageous, and now they've decreased it to eight percent. It's just a number they blew out there, um.
So it's a state.
So it's a state, uh, that has made these changes. Uh, really, they're trying to fine tune the whole new thing, um, all the time. It's constantly changing, but, um, you know, outstanding taxes now, uh, I, the town can get fourteen percent. And we're not going to get in any trouble, um, because when they go to sell their property, or they move, or something changes, they have to, we're first on the list anyways. So, um, you know, we're not gonna, the town isn't gonna take any bad backlash from it. Keeping it on, keeping it on, not putting a tax lien on it.
But in relative terms, if we, if we push out two or three years past where we can hold these current assets in that category, we're actually going to end up taking a hit on our revenue stream from a lack of trust in future classes.
Correct. The only thing is, is that, you know, um, you take the outstanding tax lien off the receivable, you know, so it's not, it's, it gets moved into tax title, so your receivable aging still will show, um, that we have FY twenty-five taxes that haven't been collected. That's the only thing, we're in the, we're in, you know, we do it every year. We've always done it every year since I've been here for thirteen years. But now, um, Nancy and I are discussing it. I, I'd like to keep it on the books, but I don't want to throw off the receivables and make the town look bad either for carrying that extra uncollected liability on our books, you know? So, it can be a catch-22. You just have to, you just have to take a look at it when the final number comes in. So, um, I just want to say there's been a lot of transition in my office. I love somebody that's been here twenty-five years, and she was my assistant, and, uh, she's been here before I was here. So I just kind of let her go with it, Julie Kelly was her name, she was fabulous. Um, I have two new people, and one is my assistant Lynn, which did payroll. So it's not much of a treasurer collector, but she's learning the ropes. And, um, I took a payroll girl out of plant, um, the building department, and she didn't know anything about payroll either. So it's definitely been a huge learning curve for my two new people. I've taken on a lot of added responsibilities and kind of pushed things off to, um, the other two people in my department that have been here a while, and one of the girls has been here over fifteen years. She's taken on some more added responsibility. But we're not, um, as timely as we were. And thanks to Nancy and her department for, uh, hanging in with us and helping us figure everything out. Uh, we'll get there, we'll definitely get there, but it's definitely, um, been tough. Um, another, uh, you know, we're still on the ninety percentile at least of collections, so the money's still coming in. We're getting everything on demand and warrants as fast as we can. Uh, we work with the building department and all of it, uh, mostly with the building department approving all their permits. Uh, we, a permit doesn't get approved in the town if anybody owes the town any money, which also helps with the collections. We sold a lot of, uh, beach and transfer station stickers this year. Uh, this was our bigger, us, our biggest year. And we, uh, don't see that ever slowing down.
Do you have those numbers?
Me, I do, actually. We sold, uh, eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three beach stickers. And, um, to date, on the transfer station, at the end of September, we sold six thousand six hundred and forty-three transfer station stickers. For a total income to the town of one million eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. And that was the end of September. So, um, that's a lot of trans, that's a lot of stickers.
That's a lot of stickers.
Lots.
No, though we, you know.
Eight thousand five.
Yeah. A lot of people take advantage of the online stickers, but, um. But only four hundred thousand, I'm not, four hundred thousand of that one million was done online, so the rest comes through my office, so, um.
Everyone wants to help.
Yeah. They don't come in.
Oh, I know.
People come in, a lot of people come in, pay their taxes too, which is nice, we like to see everybody.
Yeah. It's a lot.
Yes. So another challenge we've had is, of course, our new, um, healthcare, we switched from Maya to Mayflower. So that's been a huge learning curve for myself and for the new assistant treasurer collector. Um, she seems to be, um, get, you know, getting it all. And, um, I do believe that the transition has been, uh, went pretty well. There's still some bumps along the way, but there usually are with a new, with a new place. So I think, um, I can, you know, we've, we've done it, we've done a good job. Though, those are the, those are the perks that I wanted to say. Any questions on our treasury budget?
Uh, one here. It's all order. Not the budget. No.
Well, I, I know, we wanted to discuss the production agency question across departments here. So we want to hold it so we can follow the department. But let's. We, we put that in in case we had to start reducing budgets. It's up to you, Camp's department, if you reduce there by five percent, it's coming out of question. I don't know. Uh, the only, the only comment I had was, I was, I was reading your, your introduction analysis, which, as you stated, would become staff hours. It sounds to me like you guys have done a really great job, and the last thing we need is to reduce hours on top of personnel changes that certainly stress you guys out over there.
Yeah, so I ran a jump into the middle of three A if you took somebody away from me. Just saying.
Fair enough.
I, I seriously would.
The one thing, the one thing I wanted to say was, was not really about your department in general as much as, uh, the thing you probably was, that what that would, would incur to the taxpayers and to the residents would possibly be longer lines when it comes to things like stickers and tax payments and so. The, the, the note I simply had for myself was that I think this is a really good thing. I love coming down to Town Hall, pay taxes, pay for my stickers, to say hi to people, wait, I've always done. And I don't think I've ever stood in line behind more than two people in Town Hall, ever, in twenty-three years.
What, what you.
Which is, which is great, and I know there are times when you come down in the middle of sticker season in Town Hall.
When sticker season kicks off, there's people waiting outside.
I know.
It's gone down a little bit since.
I want to just give kudos.
None of the residents can only buy them.
I just want to give kudos to our staff across Town Hall and in your department, sort of the fact that, you know, in general, yes, there are occasional tough days where you're standing, you know, and staff's waiting to get into the building. But we do an awesome job with taking care of our residents when they come in in person. I encourage people, we don't want more people in line, but I encourage people to come in and say hi because we have an awesome staff.
You know, um, yesterday was tax day, and I have my regulars that come in and pay their taxes, and they wanted to chat with me afterwards. And I talked to treasurer. Uh, my door is always open. I'd much rather not do it on tax day, but it's certainly nice to see everyone. I, um, you know, I know, after being here, the length I have been, I know a lot of the residents. So it's, it's very nice to see them. I, I'm fine with people coming in, but I also like when people pay online.
Well, I, I appreciate you guys, and, and, you know, obviously, I appreciate you explaining to us the staff changes and how challenging it's been so we understand our, our good roles.
Thank you. Yeah, staff change has definitely been, uh, and will be. You don't, you don't just do that type of work, like, you know, ta-da. It takes a while to replace somebody who took it to twenty-five years, it's crazy. But, um, we're all replaceable and we move on, right? So now my next one is tax foreclosure. So we chit chatted about that a little bit already, it's le, level funded. Thank you to the townspeople in Cituate for the special town meeting to reflect some of the changes. They, uh, they, uh, Article Nine, um, we just amended the law by law for the tax title property. So I want to thank the town for doing that again, um, I work. The way I've approached tax title now is, uh, I still have some payment plans with people that live here. They're coming monthly to pay me. The town, again, the town of Cituate is not in the business of taking anyone's home away. We don't want to do that. So I just want to put out there that please come see me if you're having any problems. Don't let it go, uh, a, a little bit of payment is better than no payment at all. So, um, I'm trying to figure out this new tax, tax title changes and see how we can approach it. That's, you know, um, one of my goals going forward. And it's going to be cost, more costly, costly to go out there, tax, foreclosures. It's going to be a lot more costly to close out on the property. The real estate agents now and everything else, it's a little crazy, the new law. And I have to, particularly obviously.
We're in age. It's ridiculous.
Crazy.
And all ahead of the Supreme Court, was the court that ruled we couldn't keep all the money. So all the state had to do was pass statute to bring us in line with that, and we have, so that makes sense. But they put all these other requirements about real estate agents, postings, notices, and it's, it's nuts. Absolutely nuts.
Do we have a lot of properties that are, like, very important in there, that's what's right up?
We don't have a lot, but we have some. We have some that are quite bad, and you could probably tell which ones are quite bad if you drive by them. You know, I, I constantly get asked about the post fee, agendas too. I mean, they've only not paid their taxes for two years. There's a lot of other properties in the town of Cituate that haven't paid for five, six, seven. So those would be, and those are my first on my list. And I am still bringing them, these people to, uh, Landport. And right now, I'm very honest with the judge at, at Landport, with my, um, with my consultants, that the town doesn't want to foreclose on anybody, but we're trying to get the court to order people to make payment. Like, pay this much at this time. And it seems to be working for a lot of people, but, um, you know, a, a lot of people know too, that haven't paid their taxes, that, oh, uh, the town can sell my property now, I'll just wait for you to sell it, and then I'll get whatever is left. That's their attitude towards some, which is a tough attitude to have. So. Tax title is never fun. I, I, I do like it. I like working with people and helping them out. I mean, I've literally gone to Front Street, I've started at one bank and walked down the street. After work, after hours of work, tried to help people get a loan at each bank on Front Street to try to help them out. I've done it several times, so I'm, I'm here to help to take away your house, you know? Any, any questions on tax foreclosure?
No.
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 Okay, so the next one is debt. So we tried to level fund the debt, and instead of going the one point nine 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 million, we've just, uh, added it up to two million. So, you know, uh, debt is, uh, always a struggle, but we continue to keep our double A plus rating. We need to get really great interest rates. We are funding a lot of projects right now, but in the next couple of years, the debt's going to drop, some of the debt will drop off if we will, um, be able to fund new projects, for sure. I've really gotten very involved with Clean Water Trust, with the, um, water treatment plant. I've, uh, done a lot of that loan paperwork that, uh, never ends, but it's definitely been rewarding. And, uh, we just spent another ten million dollars. We got assigned paperwork the other day for that. We're going out to borrow, uh, another thirty million dollars and change. Actually, thirty-five thousand eight hundred, thirty-five million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For some projects coming up, uh, the date of the sale is November nineteenth. Uh the date of the sale is November nineteenth and Jim, Nancy and I have our standard invoice review uh tomorrow afternoon for that borrowing. So we're hoping that goes well and with the rate decrease, uh we're hoping we can borrow at least you know, three percent or we're going for three percent, hope three percent or lower. We have, yeah, we'll be happy with three. As I think we estimated, huh? Five or so, or five, didn't we when we first started that year?
We were all happy until the Fed said we don't know about December rate cuts. You know.
So um.
The water, I mean, that's a pretty good rate.
Yeah, and it's a very good rate. We've always had, we've, the town, Situate, some five in here, has always had rate rates. Like you said, estimate I am hopefully coming low, so that's what we did and we've always come in low, so.
Lower than the water, for lower, for lower. Originally said, I'd say. Any questions on debt? Yeah, no, all right.
Okay, onto.
What's counting?
Onto Plymouth County Retirement. Uh FY twenty-seven assessment is uh seven, a seven point six increase on our FY twenty-six. Uh by paying it at one lump sum payment, we saved the town a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um I am on the Plymouth County Retirement Board. I enjoy it very much and I want to say that we seem to be doing very well this year. So far, so good. Um we will be um having a meeting in December where the treasurer collectors come, come to the meeting and we'll discuss uh how it, how it's looking for the year end. Um and I do, we do an actual, a little report every two years, so we won't do it this year, but next year we will. Um the unfunded liability is still upward to be fully funded by two thousand thirty-one. So afterward, once we're paid off the unfunded liability in the retirement system, I hope to put that money towards OPEB. Uh thank you to the town for, again, um putting two hundred and eighty-nine thousand and change into the OPEB fund from the enterprise funds last night. I moved that money into um Rapid Trust Investment Firm. Uh they invest that money for us and the OPEB is doing well.
That's an unfunded liability for the six years away, the only, we're on track as today can be fully funded. My middle schooler graduates from high school. We should be on track, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And um yeah, so uh we're gonna, we work really hard, I know Plymouth County Retirement Board, I plan to let them in. That's a hard one, but I just want to say, I just want to say I think that very hard. So that's all I can say about that.
I, one question, as to more to Eric, my own education on the Plymouth County Retirement. When it comes to the, you know, the seven point six increase, I, to me, it sounds like we're on with our other liabilities and still a decent rate, all things considered. Um you know, relative to other places, other towns, other problems, but um essentially, we have no, we have no control relative to the, I mean, it's a, it's a consortium group, so it's set, it's set, we we don't have a say about trying to push it, but even with you on the boards, we have to sort of take what we get and hope that we continue to.
And we're.
Relative to.
Well, but the consortium.
National.
Possibly, right?
Yes, unfortunately, that is true.
I want to picture that.
That's definitely true and we were told like a nine percent uh going back when this unfunded liability was brought up. The town was told we get a nine percent increase every year and then it just started to do the level of place. So we right pushed the reins in, you know, tightened up the reins a little bit and said, let's stick to what we told towns. Um because between retirement and healthcare, that's our two biggest costs to fairly for the town.
Certainly. Yes, yes, but obviously, we're not the ones that are in charge, but I think that's important to know. But ultimately, I wish I had been higher, sixty-seven thousand dollars, not far as I say then, you know, twenty-five there. Last night we saved twenty-four thousand dollars in printing costs for. This is how, this is how we feel.
Yeah.
Work it down by little. It's not really sexy, it's just.
Sometimes I panic where the cash is going to come, but we figure it out, so.
You have a good team.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, anybody questions on that?
No.
Okay, the next is the group insurance. Um as you know, health insurance is crazy, expensive. Uh we are estimating a seven point five percent increase in the active plans and eleven percent increase on the Med, Meda, Medagap plans, not here at Wings. Um so uh Jim's on the steering committee for Mayflower Municipal Health Group. Um I heard that there was some figures thrown out for the Medagap, so we should be close on that eleven percent increase. The next steering committee meeting is December fourth and we should have the numbers totally up to that. Is that correct, Jim?
Uh they, it's in the back here, they did it, right? No.
You can back it up.
Eleven percent.
So um you know, we are working very carefully with Mayflower Municipal Health Group because this has been a learning curve for myself. Julie handled benefits pretty much. Um it's a learning curve for myself and for my new assistant Lynn. Uh they've been excellent to work with and Lynn and I really learned a lot and it was good, just the money we've stayed along so far for the town, it was a good move back to Mayflower Municipal Health Group. Just have to get going on the wellness plans, um you know, offer wellness to our employees. Uh there's a walk we found in November, I, you know, I hope to be getting that going on, but you know, because of the learning curve in my department, wellness, I'm sorry, has taken a backseat, so in the next like six months or something, that's definitely something that we have to bring right back. It's good to have it for our employees, but uh you know, it's going to take us a while to get that going again. But I'm working on it. Any questions? Okay, and last but not least is my federal taxes. Um we usually do a six, wait, a six percent increase every year, uh just to cover our cost of living and stuff increases. You know, I mean, that's it.
But with the, their federal taxes, they don't want to shut down, is that?
Yeah, unfortunately.
It'd be amazing, wouldn't it? They still get their money.
The IRS.
We don't get out, they still get theirs. That's cool.
The IRS will come and arrest me.
Just remind us on it, so. Sure, I'm on the board on uh group insurance. Our group insurance for the current fiscal, when I'm six and a half percent, if we had stayed in Maya, it was seventeen point oh four.
Wow.
So uh group ever changed, one from one group to the other.
And the G I C Medagap plan increased by seventeen percent and we're estimating around eleven percent, so. And fifty-two percent of us, our health insurance is on retirees.
Yeah.
So.
Well stated. Not even.
Ten later.
No, the percent increase.
Oh.
Two, two percent.
Yeah, like.
What we pay, we're happy with six and a half. The mistake is.
Sorry, get off choked up.
Thank you, man.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you to Nancy.
This is for my zone. Good luck.
Thank you.
Nice, all right. Hi, Brary.
Happy marriage.
Brary, how are you? Come on.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
You know, I actually have the things that I wanted to give to you guys.
Good. You look, you have on the agenda, that's all right.
Now we always have, you always bring us data.
Of course.
We will bring other things.
Yeah.
And I have several board members tonight, uh Kim Paul, Kim and Jim here, and those who else are on board and generally now live at the foundation of health of the year. They're right with the bodyguards.
Words look heavens. I was trying to live it up. No, I mean, we know there's a lot, so let's go through some of the town hall, there's a lot to talk about certification. Um yeah, this is, you know, so many great things happening. Since yours up.
Thank you. So um the reason I gave you guys this understanding state requirements for libraries handouts is that uh we don't always have two brand new board members, some select boards, so um and the the national laws that govern libraries are pretty specific about what requirements we have to meet, so I just wanted to run through that. Um I'm not going to go through every line tonight, um I'm just wanting to talk a little bit about uh how that works. There are um things that we have to meet. Um uh not only does the town have to appropriate a certain amount of money for the overall budget, we also have to spend a certain amount of that budget on materials. Um I put the formula on the first page, it's basically a combination of the three previous fiscal years, uh plus two and a half percent um on top of that is what the state wants to see, that's the minimum they want to see before certification. Um there are other things that um play into certification, um there are rules um like being open to all residents of the Commonwealth. Um making no charge for the services that we provide. We in Situate, um being a population between fifteen to twenty-five thousand, um are required to be opening a minimum of fifty hours. In Situate, we're like sixty-four, so we're well beyond that. Um at libraries that have a population, a town of a population of ten thousand, have to have a library director with a master's in library science. Um again, that percentage of the budget that we have to spend on materials is fixed based on the population size. Um and so that's just, you know, a brief overview of how that, how that process works. Always happy to answer any questions if you're looking at it later and something doesn't make sense to you, um or you just want a lot more about it. Um I also wanted to include um basically a one sheet handout that we've created based on our strategic plan. So that was probably the biggest achievement that we had last year is completing our five year strategic plan. This is another requirement of the state um that that we have to have a strategic plan out filed with the national board of library commissioners. Um even if we didn't have to do it, uh we would want to do it because it helps us align with what the community wants to see in our library. Um and that's incredibly important to us. Um you know, libraries have a really unique role in their communities, um because we have a little flexibility about where to focus our energy, obviously, we have our core mission um of information and books and literacy, but we also are able to do um some other things that the community wants to see. So uh we had a community planning committee that was made up of about twenty members of uh people from all over, um all different walks of of life in Situate. Um working with them, working with our foundation, with our library trustees, our friends, um and also putting out a community survey. Uh we were able to get information about what people are willing to see us working on in the next handful of years. Um so uh our first um core value in our strategic plan is welcoming community in gathering spaces. Um for us, uh that, the goals that might align with that are something like um creating an ADA compliant um walkway from the Rose Way Garden and Patio back to the main sidewalk. Um there is a center block path there right now. Uh we were hoping that that would suffice. Um it continually washes out and the town can have a heavy rain, which tells you guys, that was just every lesson on here in Situate. Um so we need to, we need to create a permanent path. Uh we do plan to apply for the municipal AD improvement grant this upcoming summer. Um and so that might be one path, uh if not, I may consider trying to put in another CBC grant um for that piece. Uh the, another thing, I'm sorry.
The Pangolender, the path is to the side of the.
So the, the, that, it's the garden, it's the Pangolander, and then there's a path that connects back to that main sidewalk um that's in front of the building.
So it's like down the side and towards the front of the path?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um something else that we're looking at doing is um uh reconfiguring our audio visual system. Um you know, I keep saying that it's a new building, it's an acre old building, so it's not a brand new building anymore and we are starting to see some wear and tear. Um the audio visual system that was put in place is, there's, it's already at the end of its life. Um so it's usable, it's workable, um and thanks to Mike and Telo, we just had a company come in and do some repairs that are going to continue to make it usable um for a little bit longer, but they basically told us, not only is the company who did the system out of business and couldn't help us even if we wanted them to, um but most of the equipment that was put in um is at the end of its serviceable life, can't be upgraded. Um and so we are looking to potentially redesign a system for that room um and either put that on as um you know, a capital project um for completely the the next few years. Um or we may try to work with our library foundation and see if there's any way that we could do some sort of combination of town and private funding um for that system. Um unfortunately, um audio visual systems are very expensive, so it is going to be an expensive project. Um our second core value that we've identified is dynamic collections and services. For us, um really especially today when budgets are very tight, that mostly just means reslicing an existing pie. So uh what we need to do in order to do that uh most efficiently is we have to really look at the data that is behind all of our different collections. Um we have a system that we use in-house that really gives us a lot of great data on how our library collection is used. Um and uh one thing that we know about our collection is that uh pretty much everything in the library is going out, it's all circulating. Um that's very good, um that means that that we're doing the right things that we need to do for the collection. Um we know that we're not meeting certain, certain needs um in the library for higher demand titles, certainly for electronic materials. We are nowhere near meeting that need. Um so we have to look at other trade-offs that we can make in the collection um in order to increase especially those patron titles and electronic um loans. And uh core value three is positive patron experiences. We got a lot of great feedback about um people enjoying being in the library, about it being a, you know, a wonderful third space for them um where they can bring their families, participate in these, you know, free activities. Um and so we just want to continue to uh make sure that we provide those good experiences for people. Um one of the things that we want to do is create a marketing and outreach plan. Uh outreach is definitely something that we've heard over and over again that people wanted to see us not just in the walls of the library, but they want to see us come out of those doors and and see them out in the community. Um in order to do that, we have to look at um what can we potentially give up that we're already doing in-house. Um because you know, without any additional staff, we have to be realistic about what we can do. Um so that is going to mean us kind of looking more closely at um all the different things that we're taking down and seeing where we can give things up and potentially take on some outreach.
Can you give an example of of what you say outreach outside of the house? Can you give an example of what the community is asking for that you're not currently doing because it's feasible?
Yeah, sure, so one of the biggest things um that we've heard a lot about is strengthen our partnership with schools. So getting into the schools more would be incredibly helpful. Um we always go in, uh we, as long as we have a children's librarian, we always go in for the summer reading. And um in order for the children's librarian to do that, she's visiting four different elementary schools and usually she's visiting, if not the entire grade, sometimes she's going to to each classroom. So that could potentially be like seven days that she's out of the building. So things like that, we'd love to do more of that, um especially as we have, you know, things like AI, um things uh just the um the fact that we don't have professional librarians in the elementary school, we would love to have a stronger partnership with them um so that we can see where the gaps are um with those, with those grades. Other things would be, um you know, uh recreation has approached just recently about having some initial conversations about uh restarting the farmer's market. So it might be something like having a librarian at all of the farmer's markets. Uh our fourth core value. Our fourth core value is strong library community partnerships. So we have so many wonderful partnerships already. Even where we're not directly partnering people, we're supporting people by having access to meeting rooms, having access to study rooms. But that, the Situate Public Schools is especially a place that we do want to strengthen that partnership. And then we also have to continue to have a really strong relationship with our library foundation and our friends at the library. Because we get, you know, anywhere from forty to a hundred thousand dollars a year from those organizations. So they're funding things that the town, you know, cannot or will not fund. But they're also funding things like every single library program that takes place is being funded by the Friends of the Library. Some towns fund their programs through their operational budget. We don't here in Situate. So in order to, you know, have their continued support, we need to be regularly meeting with them. We need to be communicating everything that we're doing in the library. And you guys probably already know this, but the Friends runs a bookstore inside the library. So there's a lot of just even operational things that we need to make sure that we're doing with them. So that's just, you know, some of the things that we'll be working on this year. We do have challenges. We have not had any new additional staff since two thousand and seven. We are open sixty-four hours. That's more than almost any other library on the South Shore. Marshfield is possibly the only library that's open as many hours as we are. And we have a lot of different things that have, have been added to our plate since we opened the building in two thousand and seventeen. Circulation has increased by thirty percent. Visits have increased by twenty-five percent. And we've taken on some new tasks such as managing the meeting rooms. So we have five meeting rooms and three study rooms. Five meeting rooms that were used close to eight hundred times last year. Three study rooms that were used, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of five thousand. So this is, takes a significant amount of management from all of the staff. We also have a library of things collection because they're objects, they, they take a little bit more time. That's a relatively new collection for us, but it's a pretty regular expectation from library users at this point across libraries that, that libraries will have these types of collections. We also are helping people with computers and, you know, I, I'll say when we opened the building, I really think that we thought, gosh, we're putting in this big bank of computers. Who's going to be using these computers in five years? Everybody's going to have a laptop, nobody's going to be in here. That, nothing could be further from the truth. Our computer use goes higher and higher every single year. And I think that it's a number of factors. So one thing is, you know, some people can't afford Wi-Fi, so it's a really good option for them. Some people don't want to have a printer at home. I mean, I don't have a printer in my house. So, you know, people are coming in just to do, you know, those, those quick things that they need to do to print. But the biggest reason that I think that we're seeing such a high amount of computer use is because especially, you know, retirees and seniors, they may have a phone. They may have a, an iPad or Kindle. They don't necessarily have a desktop computer. So they're coming in to do those things where they absolutely have to sit in front of a computer. Maybe it's to fill out some, some, something for the government. Maybe it's to put in a job application that they need a keyboard, they need to sit in front of an actual computer for that. And the thing that we're noticing about that is that there are a lot of people who require a great deal of assistance. So if you come in and you tell us, you know, you need something, you need to really quickly do something where you're accessing your email and then you're maybe going out and doing something where you're uploading a file. This doesn't sound complicated, but then you need to make sure that you remember all of your passwords. You need to make sure that your phone is up to date with everything that it needs to have. You need to make sure that you understand how to upload a document because it cannot, we're going to be sitting there with you and help me. So there's often a lot of steps that we have to take to help people with computer use that is again, a little bit, a little bit newer for us. And now we're having to navigate things like helping people with A I tools and, you know, helping job seekers and things like that.
Like that patience is saint.
Yeah, I know. Well, you know, I mean, no, nobody who comes in and sits down, we have so many people who come in and they say, gosh, I'm so stupid. I don't know how to do this. We're always like, you're not, there's nothing about you as stupid. These things are, are complicated and you're not, exactly. If you've been retired for three years, that's enough time for you to floss a lot of the skills that, you know, we might be using every single day if we're in front of a computer. So, so it's something we enjoy doing, but it is time consuming. And the other thing I just want to mention is that, so the, the town funds our materials budget and each year, you know, we have been able to get some additional money in our materials line. However, the reality of the situation is that the materials expenditure requirement exceeds what the town is, is giving to us. So this year's materials expenditure requirement is just under a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. The town has given us a hundred and seventy thousand. So we have to make up that difference somewhere. And that is usually from state aid, which is the award, it's the carrot for all of the different things that we have to do to meet certification. However, that number, just like the, all the other state aid numbers, is very much in flux. It could go, be cut in half this year, who knows? So it's not a great resource to count on. It's also technically not supposed to be used to meet the requirement. But that said, many other libraries and towns find themselves in the same position. But it does leave a significant gap. And, you know, when I was asked to, to put in the five percent reduction, if we had to, you know, reduce the budget, one of the things that I would do in order to avoid layoffs if possible is to reduce that budget and then rely even more heavily on state aid. That's obviously not a sustainable position for us. I already mentioned the strategic plan. That was absolutely one of our biggest accomplishments of the year. We had another really unexpected situation. The system that manages the library's meeting rooms, study rooms, museum passes and our event calendar shut down very abruptly last October. This was totally unexpected for us and it's a system that manages and museum passes too. So it, it manages so many different things that we do in the library and it was here one day and gone the next. So not only did we have to find a lot of workarounds for things that were already in place, we had to work with a company, a vendor to build a new system. It's a project that would normally have taken us anywhere from six months to a year. I worked with a, a team on, on my staff and we were able to do it in two months. So that was a really big accomplishment and the system, I think, has been, has been really great. People can now look study rooms themselves online from home, so that's been a great improvement. We continue to apply for grants. Last year, we applied for several Situate Education Foundation grants for a total of about ten thousand dollars in addition to, you know, the money that we're already receiving from, again, the foundation of Friends, which is anywhere from, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on what projects the foundation up by day. We worked with the facilities to paint the interior of the building. We were able to do that with pretty minimal disruption of patrons, so we really appreciate that and working with them on that. Program attendance increased by thirty percent, which was wonderful. We hired a new children's librarian and she's been able to do a lot to get people in the door. And I think those are the big highlights. The numbers, you know, I, I really didn't ask for new staff this year because, you know, it did not seem like the year to be asking for staff when I'm being asked to submit a five percent reduction. That doesn't mean that we don't need additional staff. It just means that we're not asking this year. I did ask for additional money in the materials line, even being asked for a level services budget. I really need to ask for that increase in materials because if we don't increase it little by little each year, we're going to get into a bad position where we're, we're not going to be meeting our requirements. Because again, that number goes up every year because it's based on the overall bottom line of the library's budget. And the library's budget is always increasing because of contractual increases and possible increases. Other than that, I don't really think that I asked for any additional funding for other lines beyond, you know, again, the contractual increases. Answer any questions?
One of my questions was, when we talked about, two questions. One is when you talk about the mandated materials budget for certification, you talked about the seven hundred library of things collection that is a new scenario. Is that considered a materials collections item? In other words, if you were mandated to spend a certain amount of money, do you have the, the ability to spread that amount of things versus books versus circulars versus E?
Absolutely, but the library of things budget, so we received a donation from someone when we opened the doors of the building. And I've been using that donation to fund the library of things collection. So that doesn't currently come out of the operating budget.
But you have, you have the ability to choose as a board?
Absolutely. We have flexibility of what collections we spend money on.
And then the other question is really again from my learning, the, the two point five percent incremental that they expect from a state standpoint to maintain certification on top of a three year appropriation average. Maybe this is just my brain, but that two point five minimum mandated increase is an increase that's essentially going right on top of your budget, which pretty much matches this, matches up to the proposition you can increase. So it's, it's almost like they're cutting off the means just to start again. Is that how I understand that?
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm fully understanding your question.
The increase, the increase that you're talking about, the two point five percent is an overall two point five percent increase to your municipal budget, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, so the thing, right, so I'm just saying, as a starting point, we don't prefer to increase our taxes by two point five percent every year if we can avoid it. This year is very difficult, it's impossible, but, but that's, that's supposed to be our discretionary increases in town. The state's asking you to start with the maximum possible legal increase just to maintain certification, which seems to be like kind of a cop out. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand it right, but that's basically what that is.
It is on the average of the three years, so it's not exactly a two point five over last year's number. So you can, you can.
But it's a minimum, so that would actually be more than two point five.
Right, yes.
Minimum for next year. Right, that's the biggest reference to the problem. Thanks for all the information.
Sure.
I'm continually impressed by the fact you mentioned it. I've, I've heard it so many times from residents that, that the library, which when we built the new library, everybody said, why the heck do we give a library full of books? It's constantly used more and more and more by a population that has more and more smartphones, tablets, technology, less and less paper and books in their house and their classrooms. And yet the usage keeps going up and the support staff that you have to provide keeps filling up and keeps getting more diverse. And we're all struggling to keep up with those kinds of changes. So I love the library. You know, my wife and I supported it from the start and I continue to be amazed by what you guys do down there. We're in that building probably once a week for meetings that you guys are supporting for us. So, so I'm really pleased with what you guys are managing to do. I know that this is a tight budget here, but I, I'm thrilled by the product that you guys provide to the town.
Thank you.
You know, I have one question and I put it to the, first of all, I appreciate the presentation was very clear. I love when you give us data. Just like children's librarian, and I get that it's a pull because the elementary schools don't have that children's librarian. But it's super important to have a children's librarian in the elementary schools. Is there ever a thought, this might be questioned, is, do other towns do like similar? Do we do a resource officer where they're in a shared position where, where the schools are funding, are, and, you know, the town is funding part and you're like more in the schools? Because I think it's great that we would have librarians in the schools. And then, but librarian supported by, you know, the kind of management structure of a librarian. Is that even a thing? I don't know if it's a thing.
Jess, you might know better than I do.
No, we're the first town to do it. I actually think there are some other towns who do, who do something similar. I believe when, when County Meager was the librarian, I've been here for almost fourteen years, so it's a pretty long time ago. But she, I think maybe had some initial conversations with the schools when the teen librarian position was being discussed, but I don't know how far those conversations got. And now the middle school does have, so the elementary schools don't have, you know, a dedicated librarian, they have library aides. But the middle school and high school do have professional librarians. But we would absolutely love to see at the elementary schools with, you know, even just one professional librarian that would oversee the library aides would be fantastic.
Or can we lose the library aides in the, of how you're supposed to?
I actually, they, I, they haven't been since I've been here. So I don't know if they've ever had professional librarians there.
I think they've always been A I.
In a couple of years, we'll have three schools, so that's more.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a really pretty library here in that one.
All right, well, maybe that's something to think about.
For seventeen years?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And again, don't sell the electronic resources, I just have that on the app. Finally, I don't know why I took it. There's a lot of good, seriously, if you download the, to your Kindle or anything else, really fabulous. And don't forget to, I think it could be one of the few, oh, your electricity number went down. Here it acts somewhat. But Jim, I'm speaking of not only the, the map of that, but natural gas, see it's at those rates, that's kind of about fourteen percent. So if they, if they have to go up, if we go up, we'll just take that at the end of the year.
Yeah, well, we started saying that, we, that's usually the tropes we do with the special farming in the fall.
That's. Yeah. Because with all the evidence, I mean, it's a person's cost.
Yeah, if it's causing a problem in the budget this year, then it's special, then the annual.
We true up those budgets if we after all conserve from transfer.
We had a gas meter issue for a few years, so this might be our year, our first year of getting real numbers for our, for our bills. So it was kind of hard to know if we needed to ask for more in that line this year. I think we'll know next year.
I'm writing all over your department. The words go up as much as they're saying.
Yeah.
Brains big enough. Fabulous work. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. The twenty percent. Good lines. I think I really wrote it down. Yeah, a share. No.
Well, hi, everyone. Welcome to the library list. And who is Kelly, Director of Senior Senate? And I am here with my new Assistant Director, this is Kelly Walsh, who was promoted into this position in August. So that even, even since just then has helped to give me a little bit more breathing room. She's an asset just in her own right, of course, and in her ability to pick on the variety of tasks which she, which she has. So she's had previous experience with us in both transportation and outreach, which is super helpful, which she is now helping to oversee along with the social day program, which is our program for clients with road stage dementia or Alzheimer's, which she has also done for us and along with volunteer recruitment and placement. So that said, she's a great addition to Situate, to us. So we are still seeing steady growth in, in patron use continuing, though maybe not in leaps and bounds, although it feels like it. But if we look at the numbers, you know, there's an increase of a hundred here and there, more people coming to the building maybe more. But in fact, I, someone said today, they were in line for lunch, that they feel like they were sleeping here. So there's a lot of them coming in frequently, daily. And often also we're seeing that people are coming in, it seems every day to register. And of course, we're hearing they're either new to town or even long time residents saying they're just finally getting around to it or they've heard from the people that they need to come in and start counting, which they are. So some numbers for you, so F Y twenty-five I use for that. But so we have approximately twenty-four hundred people that we're serving. But, so we have approximately 2,400 people that we're serving this past year. So they increase again, like I mentioned, and that does include also transportation clients and outreach clients that come in for services. Many of them are also coming into the building where there was a time that our transportation coordinator honestly was the only one who knew some of the clients that take the lead. But now, Libby is often bringing them to the building in addition to also the medical ones that they go to, or the other local rides. It also includes moms here, which very much help us run the place, of course, and that number is about 75 for a week.
What's your service? Is it 2,400? So put it in percent.
Annually, that number of individuals.
We have, that's more, we have 2,200 students that are supposed to. So you're serving more people than the school department. I just wanted to add that.
Very good, that is perspective. Thank you.
All under one building with a staff of how many?
Well, more or less.
I granted they're adults, so you know.
Six, seven, eight, yes. Yeah, eight.
Some of the superiors is a little less, but I don't know.
Well, you'd be surprised.
No, but I want people, and too, people need to know that, know, yeah. That's a huge amount of right we take to your sleep.
Amazing volunteers, so our staff is amazing with the volunteers.
It's amazing.
Do you have a, do you have a ballpark average of daily visits?
Yes, so, well, I wasn't going to say so.
That's one for lunch.
Yeah. Longer.
Well, that's true. So the month of November last year, for instance, was 850 individuals, which was 3,500 check-ins. So an individual comes in a day, but they might be there for three different activities and then they check in for all three. So that's what accounts for that. Or the month that-
So, sorry, so 850 different means per day average? Even if there's-
No, that's the monthly number, I'm sorry, that's the month of the number. Month of May was an increase in check-ins, about approximately the same number for the total number. So about 850 for the total number of the month. But average daily building use ranges from maybe 150, which I think we find that might be Friday, just because it really falls off, it's a busy morning, but it's quieter afternoon, to over 200 depending on the day. So Wednesday being our greatest is usually about 230 people that come in. And it just so happens that the Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month is literally the worst day, right? Because we have this very popular program along with our other activities in 70 parking spaces. So it's tough, we might get 90 for the art program that we run. And so it is, that's a tough day, but I always tell people it's just this day. I mean, parking is an issue there. It's not going to be, so I'll definitely do our best and there is extra parking there. But just that fact alone. So yes, and, and this year, this past, or past fiscal year, 15 new registrations every month. So that's about the approximate number of people coming in and not having been registered before. So that's an increase too. Transportation, you know, for the year, we really have given about 5,000 rides to approximately 450 individuals. And so those rides, and I mean, that's a big program. And we are lucky, not everyone has this ability to provide those rides. So we have three vans, two of which are loaned from the after, but one, one we know which was grant funded through MassDOT every 20 months. But those are often used, every one of them, every day. So we do have now six drivers who are part-time in various capacities at various days. The busiest day, she tells me, could be 48 rides. And or the short left rides might be, might be 10, again, on, on just one particular day. But we also use Social Community Action Council when we outsource rides. So instead of saying, no, we can't do that ride because we're booked, we use them. We pay them, but it was out of the after budget. So those are some popular numbers. Some of our accomplishments this year, really, special events, I mean, we, we like to do them anyway, but to promote social, socialization, but also some off-hours opportunities, which, which we are asked to do, but also to broaden sort of the community exposure that may not come in daily. And the friends have been very helpful in supporting the entertainment cost for some of these things. So for instance, last winter, we did a Sunday jazz brunch, and it was well-attended, and some people that don't, don't come in during the day but came in as couples or just because they were interested in music, it was a great event. We ended up having a situated band use our facility. It was supposed to be an outdoor summer evening, but it ran, so that was indoors, but at least we could accommodate that. And then also we've done a Labor Day outdoor community music event, but again, that one was endorsed this year too. But, but those are the kinds of things that we are trying to branch out and do when we can just to make it a little bit more available to others, especially the working older adults. I do want to mention certainly the notable success of our grief support group, which has been led by a volunteer for the past four years, really, Susan Kelly, who has just stepped down, and she's passed the baton to Kelly, who is picking it up. And so she is now leading the grief support group. But I can't tell you how many times I have just noted in these past years and this past year, I mean upwards to 15 people, which has been over the course of a 15-week period or 16-week period. But to feel so fortunate to be able to provide this program to these people who are having that challenge in time has been really a wonderful thing. So we're happy that we can continue with it, and Kelly's going to be great. And it has just started. So it'll run through, it has been running through May, like September to May, October to May. But that's really been something to note as an accomplishment because we have helped a lot of people and it has connected them or bonded them together as a group, but also to the senior center and maybe otherwise they would not. That's been really nice. We have started a monthly newcomers informational meeting each month just to have people come in that maybe wouldn't have been comfortable unless they knew they had someone to talk to. I mean, we'll honestly give a tour to anyone that sort of walks in the door and asks at any time, but it's kind of nice that they can do it as a group and they sit with Kelly, you know, can ask questions and go through the newsletter. We added a second monthly caregiver support group in addition to the longstanding one, but they wanted more support. And so again, I keep saying Kelly, so you can see why we hired her. Anyway, that's been another addition just because the caregivers, it's on the rise. And so we are trying to help as many as possible and maybe that. We did expand the Social Day Program that's been running for two days a week for the last almost two years now, to include a half-day on Friday mornings as well. So the idea was that we could bring people off the waitlist that had been there for quite some time and sort of use it to bring them in, get them started. And then if we get openings on the Monday and Friday, then they can go into that. So, so that's starting to happen actually, and that's been since July that we've been doing that program, so that's going well. Also, we are incorporating more memory supportive opportunities through a large grant that we received this past year, or recently however, $20,000, which again, Kelly wrote and, and received. So that's starting now really, and that will increase some of the opportunities we can offer not only to our Social Day Program participants, but to others. And memory cafes are something that some other senior centers and facilities do offer where caregivers can come along with the clients with cognitive issues. And so it's something that is appropriate for them, but also that they can do with others and not feel that they're just segregated. So that's our hope to continue with this year. Our newsletter continues to get bigger and better with an enhanced appearance and a publishing platform, which our activities coordinator, who has been new this year as well, has been giving a more professional makeover. So she has a skill set that has helped with that, since we had to migrate to something else. I should have brought you all those letters.
Is it a paper, is it a paper newsletter or is it digital?
Electronic, too.
Well, it's always published online as well, so it is a paper newsletter, which is really important, believe it or not. We call it the Bible, it's got hopefully everything in it for two months at a time, so we publish it this time. But it is also important that by the time we get it to the publisher, it almost immediately goes online. And that's helpful because actually, you know, they're printing it, so that takes at least two weeks. And we need to get it in the mail, we need to get it back to the senior center and then have it in people's hands so that we can allow them to sign up for things, which, which is one of our challenges, is just the even playing field. Because, you know, spots are limited, and so sometimes that's an issue. And so we do our best, yes. If it's online for a while, people have seen it, and we try to make it available in early copy, but then, then there's a date, and hopefully we've provided enough exposure to everybody that we can let them sign up. So now that's how it works. But yes, the newsletter is printed, but it looks, it looks good.
What is the most, in your opinion, the most, I guess you want to say the most intense? Intensely, everyone's going for the-
Saw.
Saw after, right, the-
Well, frankly, it's lunch.
Thursday lunches.
Mostly, that is lunch. And, and the newsletter doesn't really help with that. Well, we've got a couple of history classes there.
History classes.
Oh, yeah, and, and in fact, he does it twice a day because he didn't want to move into the bigger room that we might have been able to provide him at one point, but instead he wanted the classroom. And so we can put 28 people in each of those sections, so that's helpful.
So the bar isn't?
Bar.
That is bar.
He could do a-
One of the many.
He's like, do a field trip from Watercat Linkin, he's got stories on that.
That's actually, yes, that has come up.
He promised he was gonna do that.
Well, if you ask him.
Wait, is it all up at our web?
Better one.
Better one, yes.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, yes, so, yeah, there are a lot, we, some trips. Which, you know, we actually write this minute, aren't even, because, and we did go to the Glades, and that was, we did three vans to the Glades, and that did fill up, but that was something people, you know, wouldn't do. And there are others, of course. If we use our own vans, then it's very limited. Usually we only use one, but we did it on a weekend day because that would make that easier. Food service lunches are still steady, so we serve, I mean, the magic number for our chefs is 48. We sometimes do go a little higher if we can. Tuesday's our lighter day, so that might only be 35, sometimes up to 40 depending on what he is serving. But that's all, it's a little bit of a craft shoot. He's tried different things just to see what it is that keeps that a lighter day, but yet it's still just, it's just fine. Obviously, the cost is still $5, with expenses increasing, that's certainly an area that would consider could go up, but it makes people very happy that they're paying $5 still. So continued program growth, we are always adding, and certainly it's a challenge, but it's what we do, is try to please everyone if we can and try to add things that certain people are interested in in town. And that's not for everybody, the lunch crowd isn't necessarily, the exercise crowd, which is kind of better. But, you know, not everybody does everything, some do, but we have our exercise that's usually the first entry point that a lot of people will come in for. But the classes are also important, and we do have the younger set coming in now and coming to Bob's class, and they love it because it's, it's, that one's a real community. But we've had some other really nice higher-level educational opportunities for people that they've taken advantage of and who it's been great. So we want to continue, of course, doing that. We've had, you know, the lovely art exhibits every two months rotating in the gallery hallway. So that's been an effort and a program, and I've had a committee that's been really great about kicking that going for four years. We also provide evening space for community groups and committee meetings, and it's steady. It's, it's not, it's not crazy, most of them, some of them have been doing it for so long that they're a little self-sufficient, I certainly don't have to say, you know, open the doors automatically and lock them. But then there are other bigger events that we do allow in there, the garden clubs, some other forums and different things. So it, it works out very well, and I think people are happy to have it. So budget-wise, of course, close to level if we could, and for the most part, we could. Repairs and maintenance, sort of property stuff is the line I don't even have to watch, but of course with help from PM and facilities. But there are more building equipment, it's came to preventive maintenance costs that we just, we just have to be aware of or be ready for. And so far, so good, but that's, that's been a good amount at least that we haven't completely utilized, and that could happen at any time. But the annual scheduled maintenance, I mean, I'd have somebody come in and look at the movable wall, which we do use a fair amount, and that, they wanted to charge $3,000, we've gone down to $1,500. So, I mean, that was just not a cost I was thinking about because it was under maintenance, I mean, under warranty the last time. But then, so the Formula Grant that we get annually from the state, that really puts us in a good position to be able to have some money to spend on programming, to buy equipment if we need it, that might not be in the budget. I do support one somewhat full salary on the Formula Grant, but another partial salary on the Formula Grant. And we do subscriptions, dues, licenses, furnishings, and some program support where I do subsidize. So we have to pay our instructors, you know, they're trying to make a living, and we have some great instructors, but sometimes we don't want to charge our patrons to come to a lecture, and with exercise, we want to keep it affordable. So we subsidize what the delta is between what they pay and what we need to pay. So that's what the Formula Grant does do for us now. So it's based on the census now from 2020, and we have, or we're counting, 5,903 older adults 60-plus. So that's what the Formula Grant is based on. And this year, like, geez, they did get it up to $16 per older adult, which actually comes out to, I made a mistake on my budget because I said it was 88 like last year, and it wasn't, and actually went up a dog. So it's $94,000. So that's, that's a good amount of money that does allow us some, some freedom of being able to support things that are not in the budget, have never been, and would usually get passed either to the patron or we're always looking for grants, and we do get donations. So we do have donations, which we are judicious with, with using, with spending, but they are there for, we hope, sort of concerted program efforts when we need them, or outreach, or community sort of causes, so we just spend a little near and near. But with the friends, supporting the entertainment, and I can go to them with other requests that I might have. So we do have some funded sources. This year, I do hope we'll, we'll have some sort of time to seek more grants, so we could get maybe other money to support some things that maybe we don't have to rely on the budget for.
Is that something that you think having a new assistant or more part-time staff is going to help you?
Absolutely. That was a goal, for sure, yes. And otherwise, of course, I can have some goals. But yes, grant writing, absolutely, because it's been something that's fallen to the bottom, unless it was, you know, the Situit Education Foundation has always been good to us, the Cultural Council, but really looking for some larger scale programs. They are up there. But otherwise, really being able to provide, I'd like to provide better reporting sort of to the community about the numbers that are coming into the center, about the number of programs, about the things we've done each quarter or each month. So that's one of my roles, posting those, getting them in print, establishing some sort of packaged learning programs if we could, which I believe we will be able to do with some volunteer help. Also, more open houses and even cultural and community events to target some diverse demographics that maybe aren't coming in still. So, you know, you can never rely on your laurels. I mean, we do have attrition sometimes, certainly people move away, they get older, some pass away, and so you're always still want to keep those numbers coming and keep that energy. When people are getting younger, which we do tell them all the time, still looking for just the right programs to keep them coming interested, happy. So those are some of the goals there. Lifelong learning in general, but targeting some health and wellness and longevity, that's the target hoping for next year as well. You know, our challenge is, of course, it is parking, but somehow it's just, you know, it's just become something that we manage. And occasionally, come winter, you know, there are some complaints, but luckily we do have a little, we have a valet volunteer who does, that does work, oh, a couple of days a week, sometimes more when we need it. And then managing enrollments and registrations, which is just tricky because, you know, we need to be fair always. And meeting the needs of the patrons, and creating a communication network that does inform and publicize without it just being the newsletter or the newsletter online. So, you know, just bringing some more dynamic opportunities for communication with the public, with the community, and with our patrons. That's what I'd like to go. So, any questions? What we really want to budget?
A fuse of praise for the end, but I'll, I'll-
I did.
Yes.
So, what, what, uh, calls a brainstorm as much as a question, um, you, you mentioned earlier that you have about seventy regular volunteers, on average, current, right, on regular basis? Has the senior center ever considered, you know, most of your twenty-four hundred yearly patients, patrons? Um, I have patients, you have patients, patrons. Are people with skills, experience, lifetime, you know, service thought processes? Um, many of them have been involved in volunteering in all sorts of capacities over time, and, um, one organization I belong to, um, and I love it about this organization, um, we pay a membership to belong to an organization, we have the ability to decrease and subsidize that by volunteering, creating work, service, sometimes it's maintenance, sometimes it's just teaching, being involved, what happened? I don't anticipate the senior center meeting or, or wanting to require some kind of membership fee, I don't suggest it. That's not what I'm suggesting. What I am curious about is if you've ever wondered about, um, trying to do some really good outreach, not just to the typical people who raise their hands, but to suggest ways in which some of the cost basis services that people do already come and want to involve themselves in could basically be bargained or traded for by volunteering their time instead. Which would increase your volunteer base maybe dramatically, even if it's one or two hours a month from somebody. Uh, and diversify from seventy volunteers to three hundred regular volunteers versus twenty-four hundred people in exchange for services rendered, which are then in turn adding to your qualities, not.
It's a great point, and we do hope to increase, and part of the problem with increasing is really finding spots for them, but, but to use some sort of professional skill sets and expertise, and really even just the speakers that we do get that in fact are not interested in compensation, they are really coming in just offering, and so they're not even in that number, you know, I mean, the sort of varied.
Absolutely, and there's a delicate balance there between you don't wanna lose people that are already giving out of the kindness of their heart, but I, but I also think there are plenty of times when a small incentive uh, can provide that little twist of an arm to help you and help provide more services to more people when you keep wanting to expand your services to wider populations.
That would certainly be something we would start to look at, just to increase. And we'd like that, even when you think about lifelong learning and having programs where you need to find people who could give those courses, who could, uh, upset would they do it for free for?
Well, I mean, there is no free lunch, right, but, but if the, if the price on lunch went from five to seven, but you could offset that by one volunteer hour.
Do bring some in for lunch, yes, we don't charge anybody.
So, I got that with my thought, uh, as you look forward, otherwise, I think it's fabulous and I guess, uh, what do you do for the population of town, and I think the numbers are really impressive.
Thank you.
That's all.
I think Eric has been in at least.
Oh, yeah.
Can I just, can I just say? Please. Yeah, I, I've been there, and, uh, I, I like the newsletter, that keeps me in touch. I've reached out to you on certain individual occasions, and you've been right there to help people. I think what you do is phenomenal. I think everything, that, that whole building runs like clockwork. And it's always doing something, and people are still involved.
Thanks.
It's really a compliment to all of you guys, what you do, the dedication and your volunteer force.
Absolutely. The patrons do bring the energy as well.
Yeah, it's amazing.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And the food is good.
Great, great.
My compliments to you, I look forward to hopefully many more years and
Thank you.
The more creative thoughts that can happen.
Always.
Should happen.
I haven't tried, but you guys do a great job up there.
We'll let you in, we'll get you in. We have some discretion.
There is a big coffee bud in here, I'm looking at, that's amazing.
I've always had coffee when I go to work.
Well, you know, that is a nice thing, that it is free, but I will, and I should give credit, the friends had started a couple of years ago to give us uh, money toward the coffee.
Yeah.
Which is helpful to offset certainly the expense of it as it's increased, but they do love their coffee.
Yes.
It's sort of, who doesn't, I mean, Building Nineteen used to give free coffee.
For even more context for folks, so twenty-four hundred patrons, it's currently fifteen percent of the town population. That's amazing. We talked, we, I think Shari and Michelle talked about the average age in town, I mean, it is, it is a growing community here in South Shore in general.
Yeah.
Where now it's, sure, I forget, what was it, over six, oh, sixty percent, something like that, anyway.
All right.
Our average age has gone from like forty to sixty over the last thirty years.
You know, the prediction some five, six, seven years ago, especially when we were planning for the building, was that by twenty twenty-five, really, thirty, it would be a thirty-five percent, which certainly is over sixty.
Right, people, volunteer, member here, mention, I mean, it's the types of folks we have. It's unbelievable, so, thank you, it's only gonna become more.
Yes.
And thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, we'll talk about that.
I mean, this is, I should have been first.
Other than.
Department one, um.
Isn't it great to hear that?
Yeah, it's amazing to hear it all, it really is. We have so many wonderful resources and people in this community, working in the community, so it's always impressive to hear. I'm happy to share my situat facts report, and as always, be mine. Everybody, including anyone that's watching this meeting, that I am a resource for everybody in the community, for all ages, and, um, always happy to help in any resource navigation, feedback, all the things. So, um, last year was, I'll start with accomplishments, just the highlights, since you have the paperwork here.
Yes.
Um, highlights and plans for the year and budget proposal for the year. This, um, last year was the first full year that we completed a situat back to the town department, uh, the government grant funding that we originally started, Coalition Act ended, naturally ended, there was a five, plus five-year grant with a little bit of an extension for leftover money, so it didn't end related to any, um, the, the program shutting down or anything like that, it was planned, um, and that's why we proposed to continue the coalition work on that town budget, um, so I'm pleased that we're able to, um, maintain the programming that we've done for situat backs, um, with this sort of beginning budget that we got last year and was proposing this year. Um, and continue to, um, deliver all the programming, so education for kids and parents and the community, all the collaborative work of coalition building, and continue to improve in rates of youth substance use. Um, so on that page three, three, two, there's a whole good list, last year's youth risk, youth risk survey that we, um, implement in grade seven through twelve every year in health class. We have the, um, some of the lowest ever rates of youth substance use than we've ever had in situat since we started collecting the data. Um, so we really started the high school in twenty thirteen, the middle school was a few years later, uh, but we, we really just comparing the last ten years. Um, and have seen some, some major, major improvements, including, um, the lowest ever rate of high school students report drinking alcohol the last month was forty percent last year, um, compared to fifty-six percent in twenty fifteen. Past month usage is one of the things we really pay attention to, are you currently using a substance? And, um, those for alcohol and other substances over the years have been significantly higher in situat compared to other communities in Massachusetts and compared to the nation, um, so alcohol continues to be the main substance we pay attention, attention to. Um, and will continue to work on, um, as a community with our cultural norms and sort of a permissive culture around, um, alcohol use, um, so we continue to work on it, but we have reached our lowest numbers, only twenty-five percent of our high school students report, um, drinking alcohol in the past month compared to forty-one percent. And sixteen percent only, there are only sixteen percent of senior high school students report binge drinking in the past month, so that is uh, five more drinks in a row in one sitting, so if you get drunk, um, and so now we're in line, that sixteen percent is in line with uh, the state average, finally, um, so I always wanna continue working to lower those sort of, um, aggregated numbers in our kids, and we're making some really good progress there. I'm gonna skip down to the bottom, um, the last two bullet, instead of leaving alone everything to you, I'm really proud of a couple of bullet points. Um, these were some things that were really, really concerning at the beginning of backs, were the rates of young people drinking and driving, or riding in a car with someone who had been drinking, and we were way, way above a hundred years ago, and we're finally gotten closer to in line with, um, regional averages. So only eleven percent of situat high school students report riding in a car with a driver who had been drinking in the past month. Um, and similarly for cannabis use, and that was one of those risk behaviors that was really off the charts here in situat, so collectively, these are some things we use to sort of drive our programming, to say we're doing updates in the curriculum or support groups for parents or whatever it is, partnering with the situat police, you know, beach patrols during the summer, all, all the things, you know, there's kind of a million strategy behind each of these things, and this is how we kind of show you the evidence that, uh, collectively, it's making an impact, so we're really proud of that, and, um, we continue. I did not include in this report the numbers from our middle school survey, it's a similar, but separate survey, fewer questions for our seventh and eighth graders, we don't even administer, administer the survey in sixth grade, because really, um, in general, like the situat, um, the risk behavior is sort of a late moving behavior in our, in our community, it's a very protective community usually here from all these other services, that our kids have lots of things built to them, um, and lots of supervision, lots of activities, and we're seeing substance use, and this is consistent since when I started fourteen years ago, um, consistently, substance use starts later in situat these days, and, um, it's very, very low in middle school, consistently very low, at or below the state average for substance use, so really wonderful, um, protective factor thing that we have going in, we just try to, our goal is sort of to continue that, delaying when, um, young people even start, and to have fewer kids who start at all, and we're seeing that, um, through the data too, so we're seeing that also in sort of like behaviors, referrals to treatment, problems with the adjustment counselors, and, you know, uh, the sort of like suspension-like activity that you can see at the high school and middle school level, we're having fewer and fewer of those incidences because all this work is adding up, which is really amazing. I'm so really proud to have been along for the ride and all this work, and it's been a real, um, you know, someday, maybe I'll write a, an article or a story about how this was accomplished, because it's a really beautiful model of multi-sector engagement, we all started in a grassroots way, but we engaged all the people in the community, um, and Gregory Henry, who's where Coach Bears worked with me, um, the coalition model, um, refers to me as, as the quarterback, um, which I don't even know what that means, but apparently, um, I don't get the, the idea, kind of. But, so I'm the, I'm the person that will be interfacing with all the different, all the different folks, um, whether that is, um, the pediatrician's office, um, getting the, even South Shore Hospital, working with the police, and the school's off tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with the clergy leaders, um, so really being sort of getting the tentacles of prevention skills and groups and information into all the places where it needs to be, um, and in that way, there can be one sort of quarterback doing the work, um, and, and really also building the, um, the work into those systems, so into all the different departments of situat, making sure that they have the information that they need, we're very transitioned, having lots of stuff available online, um, having the website and newsletter and Instagram and all the, all the things, so busy families can access the information, um, in their pocket. Um, of course, we love when they can come to our in-person events, of which we are happy to announce, um, the Power of Prevention Conference, um, this information, we go and go through all the all the town channels in your inbox, you know, your phone, um, this week, uh, but we're really happy to bring, um, I'll share about that in our plans, but this is something we have been doing, um, we transitioned from having multiple evening events for families, we target audience for a lot of our work, our parents of elementary through high school age, um, children, because we're talking about substance use prevention, and they're a major lover for that work. Um, and the kids get, get the information in school, right, so kids get to go to health class, but the parents do not, so we've learned that that's a real, um, opportunity, um, for us, and we people are busy, and there's lots, lots of wonderful things to do in situat, and people are working and commuting and doing all the things. So years ago, we transitioned from having, you know, from Amber and begging people to come out many nights, um, throughout the year, we offer some programming in that way, um, but consolidate it into a one-day event, so we call it the Power of Prevention. It's a one-day conference that everybody is invited to, and it's free, thanks to some, um, community sponsorship, it will be at the Gates Middle School, and I can't believe I'm gonna reference another thing about football, um, but we choose this date based on the Patriots' bye day, um, which is really hilarious, uh, when I heard of a coalition on Cape Cod offering a similar, similar event years ago, um, I, I have to admit that I sort of blew the idea, I was like, oh, no one's gonna go to that, no one's gonna come on a weekend for this stuff, I'm like begging people to come, you know, for coffee or in the evenings, and it acted that we went to preview the event, and it was spectacular and well-attended, and the feedback was awesome, so I partnered, um, as I tend to do, with people doing the good work, find out how they do it, and then copy it for situat, um, and then share with other communities who are looking, so we, we took the model from Cape Cod Coalition and implemented it here, and, uh, one of the, was that sweet spot between sort of fall and spring activities for families with younger kids, and then it was actually at a coalition meeting where , uh, believe it or not, a priest from St. Mary's is attending, uh, our coalition meeting at the town library, and he suggested looking at that Patriot's schedule, and so we've stuck with that ever since, um, so it'll be Sunday, December seventh this year, and we are welcoming a researcher from Stanford University who will, um, give a great presentation about the teen brain and adolescent brain development, and then there'll be four workshops, I'll leave one, and then we have a, a Gates School Adjustment Counselor, Steve McGuire from situat high school, and then our friends at South Shore Period Recovery are offering a fourth breakout workshop, so everybody goes to the keynote, and then you choose one of the four, um, sessions afterwards, so it's a great event, we expect hundreds of people, and I'm very proud of that, um, feeling that idea.
So is that like a half a, half a day?
It's like two, this year, it's usually three hours, but we need in two hours and fifteen minutes this year, so we need one main event, uh, resource tables and coffee, snacks, and then the little breakout sessions in the classroom, and we've learned, um, you know, like the library, I do lots of my workshops, the parent, parent choice, choices workshops and the backs meetings there, um, I just brought the idea tonight, with a reminder tonight that I should be using the senior center tonight, so I'm gonna be hitting Linda up, uh, but Gates is a beautiful place to hold the conference, I mean, that dining commons and the projector, and then all the, especially on a Sunday afternoon, it's really quite spectacular. Um, and, um, we'll take beautiful photos, Seth usually comes and reports at Eno, it's really a, really a lovely event, so I'm glad this timing worked out, thank you for moving me up. Uh, so other than that, the store is pretty much, um, we've sort of tweaked the menu over the years and learned what works, you're always adapting a little bit, um, moving some stuff online, we, a lot of the educational things people prefer in person, as I prefer in person for this work, um, so those continue, strong collaborations with situat public schools, um, with providers and social recovery, um, constantly, I wish I had so many volunteers, constantly replacing volunteers. There are some lifers, I would say, but many people sort of phase out of this as the kids graduate, um, and that's okay, we're always sort of refreshing and renewing our connections, and, um, that's super helpful, but it's, you know, the good piece of the work. Um, one of my goals for, uh, myself, um, professionally and for, um, for the town is to hopefully in this upcoming fiscal year to be able in some form implement a regional model of prevention work, um, so there exist, um, concepts of this, no, not concepts, but actual, um, implementation of this concept in Plymouth County, so Plymouth County and Plymouth area, substance use prevention collaborative, and Rockton area substance use collaborative, um, and there are some other regional um, versions of what we have here in situat, and I think, um, that's what I'd like to see for sustainability and also for, um, best practices in the region, so um, it would be really helpful, some of our neighboring communities have nothing, and, you know, of course, I help them and share things, but it's very ad hoc, and, and that's super helpful to those communities. Other communities would mentor, I mentor over the years, and they have baby virgins, uh, but I'd like to see a South Shore Regional Prevention Collaborative, um, and I'm work partnering with, um, Mark Malharin at South Shore Period Recovery, of which there's a grand opportunity that has come up There's a grant opportunity that has come up through the Department of Mental Health that is offering, it'll probably be pretty competitive, but we're working on that this month. And if that comes through, there would be a fiscal agent, not the town of situat, but I'd help create that structure. And situat, you participate, you know, this organization could participate. And then Hull and Normal and Marshfield, that don't have any coalitions or, you know, meaningful prevention work, could begin to do the, do the work to develop a coalition model. And if they want to seek funding, hire a person there. So there's a whole, when that, if that comes through, I'd be happy to come back and share that, you know, or if anyone wants to check out that, it's really interesting. And I think there's a lot of, on the scale to be added by doing that. I always share everything, but you know, there's still a fair amount of work to, you know, to pull off what we do. So not every, you can't really do that through sheer volunteering. So I'd love to see a regional model, we've got support from Senator O'Connor for that vision. Hingham had a, for example, Hingham had a small coalition, kind of like situat, called Hingham Cares. Their grant ended, their town, they did not work in collaboration to make it a town thing to sustain. And so they're scrambling right now. So in theory, they could come under an umbrella and, you know, to get some personal funding. So I do, I think that's really important for, for situat and for the region. You know, it's not necessarily our remit and then there's a town situat to make that happen. But I think we have been a leader in the space, a leader in the opioid epidemic and the recovery support. So we kind of know how to do it. So that is my plan. And we have some good news coming through, but that's my short version. I have, can I answer any questions?
Can I ask a silly question? And I just understand that there are surrounding towns around us that have no prevention programs.
Yeah, there's things in school, but yeah, but Normal does nothing. Marshfield has a very loose volunteer group, Hull has nothing. Cohasset, I mentored Cohasset, they're set up very similar to us. Hingham I mentored, they were set up, but not as successful and now it's sort of fading. And yeah, I'd love to have like a base of like, you know, we could have some rule, you know, some basic criteria for participation, right? And even it could be just a representative from the board health to start or someone from the schools and we teach them and that's how we learn. But yeah, there's, there are a lot of towns that, that don't. It doesn't mean there's no help available to them, but there's nobody making, and making sure it happens, like we need a board back, right? Making sure that we have events every year and that the schools have our data and the resources on the town website are correct. Like all the basic, you know, can't work the basic and then platinum level. So yeah, it's, it's a, you know, honestly, I think that that should be top-down. I think the state should be doing that and I've provided testimony to that effect. When the, the group that created this new grant opportunity was something that I worked with Jim Cantwell, our former representative Jim Cantwell on, it's called the Promote Prevent Commission, which is to sort of have a blue ribbon commission on one of the evidence-based practices in behavioral health. Like so upstream prevention for mental health and substance use prevention. And it was a, you know, really big deal when it was established. Taxes from vape sales actually fund this grant. And it's taken all these years to even, you know, produce one grant opportunity, but at least it's coming. But that was the idea, like the idea was that everybody would have some basic prevention representation and best practices access. But it's hasn't really come to fruition yet, so it's a very patchworky system. So I've learned a lot about that, how things are funded and organized and.
So you mentioned earlier when we were talking about the senior center. That, that, you know, the staff of twenty-two people, they're serving twenty-four hundred names, which is larger than the school system. And I would, I would offer that Emery's staff of one point one serves the twenty-two hundred people in our school system, complete as a full-year project every year.
It's a big class.
That's not including all peer recovery adults and other members of our community that take advantage of taxes. So, so I think it's, it's unbelievable what you've put on your back in the last ten years and what you've done, what you've accomplished. I think I love the most is that we look at numbers a lot here, but the evidence coming out of facts is fantastic. And it's really, really evidence-based. We do this while we don't, Emery does this work with Greg and, and their volunteers to put the evidence on the table. And it's really phenomenal what they continue to be able to do for our town's students. As a parent, as a volunteer in our school system, I, I love what we're doing for our kids.
Yeah, thank you. It's honestly, it's an honor to be able to do it. And, and by no means, you know, there's thankfully, there's not two thousand people coming in my little office every day. But, so it's a different model for sure, but it's, I love how it's sort of changing the water, running everywhere. So it's, I've got to see a lot of change in all these different pockets of situat. And so I think that's the, the concept that I think is really super unique. You don't need a big giant staff, I love that person. But you know, you can, with the right mindset, you know, collaborative approach. You're, you know, the models that you're working with, people that are already being paid, right? That are in that job and response, and you're making your jobs better. So I will go do the research, find the best curriculum or whatever it is, the best support group. When we start those interventions like the overdose laws with the police department, all that stuff, I would find it and then bring it to the police chief and then find the people to do it. And then now they do it and I barely have to work with them, you know what I mean, on that stuff? So it's a different.
Well, it speaks to what you've been able to do, I think, in collaborating with different quarterbacking this group. Bringing people, you talk about tentacles. And I think whether it's talking about the churches or the police department or the school system. I think what you've been able to accomplish and the communication you're able to continue is phenomenal. One of the things I would offer is that we've talked a lot recently about mental health. And I think that whether it's peer recovery and substance abuse, the facts that we're focused on in a, in a changing, an overwhelming space. I think as we start talking more about mental health and health that we can try to resource, find support for our residents in. It, it may not be exact and it may not be perfect.
I've been meeting with some of those folks, yeah.
The collaboration that we continue to evolve in that space might be an opportunity. When we start talking about how to help our kids in the schools, how to help our adults, senior centers for grief counseling. But also obviously in different spaces for mental health applications. I think we're a team of collaborative units.
The model you've got, right?
It's a great place to start looking at how to apply it to a different problem.
Exactly. And there's certainly some overlap too. So Freya and Jamie attended one of the meetings I had with Paul Riley and some of those folks that are working sort of like defining the problem right now. And lots of the work that I've done in, on the social work has overlapped. So I shared kind of my experience with building this and helping to start with peer recovery and make, you know, sharing some of the data, some of the challenges and successes. And very much using that sort of coalition, teaching that sort of all and help approach, coalition model. And, and made some introductions to a lot of these kind of same stakeholders or people that specifically provide mental health services in the region. So Paul is taking the lead and doing lots of research on that. I think there's lots of opportunity to, yeah, use the model, possibly even, you know, when fit.
It should work in the end.
Yeah, exactly, right. Or, but it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I came away from just, we're going down a.
Yeah, rabbit hole, yeah.
But I came away from that meeting kind of overwhelmed.
I know.
And, but I, after I got off the meeting, the biggest thing I, I got out of that was how do we de-stigmatize the need for mental health? How do you make it a normal thing? If I'm not feeling right, if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm depressed and I have all those syndromes. How do I, how do I feel, how do we make it de-stigmatized so that the individual knows who to call and doesn't mind?
Right, that's right, yeah. Well, I think.
That's how that's.
That's what we've done.
I think that's what Emery's team has done for our youth in this town over the last ten years. When you talk about the, they're talking about the senior party, right? You talk about the, the, the party, right? The, the concept of de-stigmatizing the idea that it's okay to go to a party and have a great time and not go drink just because you went to a graduation party.
And that same thing should be, that's okay if you're, if you're depressed, to pick up a phone and talk to somebody. It's okay if you're feeling suicidal to not hold it in.
Yeah.
To reach out and shout about it.
And to understand where those resources might be. And how do we get that really going everywhere? So that's why I think that tentacle approach can be applied or adapted to a new challenge. And I'm glad we have resources like you.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting, yeah. And I think, and we need a leader too, you know, and, and somebody there has to get, you know, it has to be somebody's job at least. And then maybe there's a coalition system under it. So there are some places, so Barnstable County does have a behavioral health. I don't know if it's, is the government, they have an actual regional government too? Yes, yeah. So we don't have a layer operating in the county like they do. So they have regional people that do that. So I, I subscribe to everything, so I get their newsletter. And you can see that in one newsletter, there are things about mental health speakers, grandparents raising grandchildren support group and affordable housing training. You know, like a social services lens to everything. And I, I miss that, I wish that we had something like that. I don't think that we town of situat needs to build a giant one of those, but maybe there's a regional approach to. Remember, even when you were in that meeting, you're like, someone needs to put all these resources in one place, so there's a lot, right? And I just want to close or I can continue talking all night. But when you think about that stigma and help-seeking behavior, I have to say like, I have four young, pretty much young adult children now and, and doing this work so closely in this town for so, so long. I've seen the younger generation is so much better at that, so.
Really? Blessings.
It's, it is a blessing, it's a wonderful thing. We have, we actually have decent resources built to us. I think that, you know, that's a generalization. Some situations, of course, are more complicated and there's weird barriers sometimes with mental health crisis and legal things and all of it. But the schools do a really nice job and they're continuing to improve that. And I think, yeah, I think just as, as far as like stigma and attitude and things like that, the kids talk about it more. More comfortable asking for help and helping a friend. I think especially post-pandemic where we're slowly coming out of it. And some of the surveys, I didn't include that day in here, but we do collect some of that self-reported data in our school surveys and things are looking better too, on the whole. Yeah, so, yeah, see adults, exactly, of course. More, more like mental levels and help is, more is more, so I'm all, I'm all for that. But it's, could be easily overwhelming, I think, to, to get, but I'm here for.
That's great.
Yay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. Oh, one last one, I promise I'll stop. But part of my budget, and just to remind, part of my budget is a subscription service that we took on way back when and put it into our federal tax budget and now just kept it, is our mental health helpline. So we, the town of situat, subscribe to the interface mental health referral service. It is a wonderful private service, so anybody in situat can, it's a helpline, so nine to five Monday through Friday. Call the phone number and do a ten or fifteen-minute intake with a, a master's level clinician about their mental health need. And so it doesn't have to be drugs, it can be anxiety, it can be divorce, it can be having trouble paying for more, which stress, all of the things. And it's absolutely wonderful and we get twice the amount of reports. It's used by, we get a demographic, you know, chart. It's originally, it was used almost exclusively by schools, so the school adjustment counselor would give it to the families. And now we see many more people, including seniors and middle-aged folks, anybody in situat can use that. So one of my proposals to the, the team that wants to work on it to help in situat was help me promote that more. Yeah, so I think that we're paying for it, we can use it a little bit, and it's a, the quality is really quite good.
So like giving information out.
Yeah, yeah, so more like, yeah, that's like one thing, like they match you with a provider. So they match you with somebody that takes your insurance, is accepting new patients, they do all the calls. Like people make calls and you give up because the person never calls you back because it's one lady in an office or they don't take mass help, all the things. So they find you somebody that's a match and they follow up to see if it was a good fit, it's really, really good. I wish everyone had it, I'm glad that we have it and I love more people use it. So, you know, if anyone wants help, volunteer and keep banging that drum. This is like a year, a year or ten, we'll send you a ten that we've had interface, so. So. Thank you.
Very good.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Goodbye.
Now on to, there's a lot of it, cause you want to put it, you're all. New business, so this says we use on structure, more. Talking about the, I really had this idea a bit more from what Hingham did. I wanted to float the idea out for everyone. I'll give Hingham credit, you know, we should, but they had an all chairs meeting. Because, you know, there are all different chairs and all different committees, committees were able to talk. And the agenda essentially was to help break down some of the internal communication gaps that were there. I didn't know if that was something of possible interest.
Can you elaborate a little bit more, what are you saying? So we brought all the chairs in, is their board member the chairs?
So it's essentially you have all the chairs of all the different committees.
Yeah.
So from.
Fifty.
Right. And they had a little, you could, you could see a bit more of what Hingham did. But essentially, part of the, the part is for folks to share, not to give a whole filibuster of what they're doing, but make sure that folks know what all these different committees are doing with each other, not with each other, what they're doing. So possibly, hey, you're working on this, hey, we, we have someone, we actually are working on similar, there's a grant, we're looking at stuff. And part of it, it also to get some feedback for that as well.
Often with.
It was the first time they did it, it was just the first time.
So it was like collaboration and also consistency, figuring out.
Yeah, and also getting a better sense of kind of what the goals.
Barriers, maybe?
Correct, barriers and goals, like, hey, wait, we're not getting anything back from X, Y, Z, we're really having trouble with. That was really part of it. We talked a little bit about this at the, at the, at the meeting, I thought it kind of, this, our meeting back in the summertime. I did, I thought that may help address some of our concerns that worked, you know, with communication, so.
It'd be select board meeting with the chairs versus just the chairs?
No, it would be with the select board. You do it via Zoom.
I would think you didn't have to go in person. They'd have to buy this one.
Yes. We don't have to make any decisions tonight, I'm just throwing it out there so people can think about it.
I, I think if you did it by Zoom, you'd be hurting yourself a little bit. I think to do it in person, you know, almost like a sabbatical kind of a thing, like, like we did our thing. You know, bring some food in, do it in a decent facility that everybody can be comfortable, not jammed into this.
See your center. Did you, did you watch, could you watch recording this way?
I, no, I was agreeing on the right highway. We moved it out on the library, some coffee, you have it.
Yeah, yeah, again, there's nothing, you know, we don't have to do it next week, but just think about it, yeah.
Yeah, start feeding people consistent stuff.
Well, we have fifty-two standing committees or something in that range, right? Not doing it subcommittees.
But just to get the chairs themselves all in one group, because there is cross-pollinization that can occur. Like when I talk to, to situat housing with Affordable Housing Trusts, they want to talk to each other now a little bit more. That's, that makes this very interesting, very good.
So I, I like the concept and I think, I think if you gave every chair three minutes, that's a three-hour meeting.
To introduce what they do.
So that's not including, not including, you know, discussing concepts.
Breakout sessions.
So I think, I think a breakout session might make a bit more sense to start. And I think there are probably some, you know, we just did a survey, right? I think maybe to start with a five-question survey of all fifty chairs. So we could figure out maybe, you know, where are your most likely overlaps and coordination points? So that maybe we can almost pre-assign five or six breakout, pre-breakout groups.
I think you should also meet with your Hingham counterpart and see, see how that went, how it goes. What, what does that get out of it? What, who would make, what does make, you know, they're very similar to our operation, so, yeah.
I didn't want to go down, start doing all that.
I like the concept.
Just like now, this is.
I like the concept. One thing that ironically I brought up to Jim just passing, that was yesterday, why not? He does this. So, so I sit on EDC and Barry's the chair of EDC. Barry, just this, this was actually going to be in my liaison report plan, I don't have it. Over the last few months has been working hard to try and create something sort of similar relative to committees outside of town hall. And, and try to pull together written liaison reports, very short, very bullet-based. He can collect at EDC and redistribute to all committees to encourage. He can collect at EDC and redistribute to all committees to encourage cross-combination and encourage inter-committee communication. So I think a good example on a very sort of basic level is, is beautification sidewalks, EDC. Uh, bylaw review and, um, uh, highway, uh, traffic rules and regs, right? We all seem to be talking about some basic things like e-bikes, sidewalks, safety, right? And the bike committee, so they were on there too. So, so those six committees have a lot in common right now and a couple of basic goals. And we've started talking. But having a once a month email that goes to Barry for each of those six committees has allowed us to start collecting some, some common goals. Um, the, the safe walk, safe, uh, safe walk to school initiative. Uh, concept that, you know, sort of started with bikes, has expanded to all committees. So. Um, so that has helped a lot. And I will credit Barry for collecting some basic concepts that started to give us some easier access between chairs. So if we could start doing something at the town level that I was talking to Jim about. I was talking about more on paper in terms of a monthly email point that comes to one central source. And then immediately goes back out, just like, just like Jim does with his department heads internally. Just like we do with our weekly update to the community. I think this is something that I would love to do because if you got five bullet points from, you know, call it the top five from each committee once a month. You might see instant obvious overlaps with those school bodies. Um, which we try to do here every week and every two weeks at our meeting, but it becomes a central point.
Yeah.
Ten, twelve times a year.
Yeah, that's one location.
One location. And, and so I, I think it just, it piggybacks on what you're talking about. So I, I love the idea, I think fifty-six people in one room. I'm not sure how that coordinates unless you're just trying to create a breakout concept.
Yeah.
But I like.
We incorporate both, yeah, we'll work on, we like the general consensus, seems like we do.
Yeah.
Incorporate that as well.
And when you.
A meeting report or whatever, technical summary.
And on your, uh, that's the wrong thing, but on your survey, one of the interesting things, or just put it. One of the things that came out of the survey yesterday, more than twenty-four hour period.
Jamie.
Was.
Survey, yes.
Uh, was that one of the places was communication didn't score terribly well. And that's something we are actively working on with our website, with other things. I think these two things could be a nice point of communication, internal, external, and community.
Love it. Follow it.
Good.
Alright. Uh, next, we very conservative, we're talking, we have some early results are again. Um, told you we'd get some. Can't wait to see the, uh, full command of questions with all those minutes. But again, just perfect, so you take those off, take a look and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you do any in a couple more weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a couple.
Thank you. So you posted that. Liaison speaking up, who would like to lead us?
I have no idea. To bring forward, except I have some meetings coming up and I sent you and Jimmy a note tonight. And if you respond back, I'm going to think about how I respond to them in a. In a, in, in, in that vein.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think maybe, uh, I should pass it by you guys before I just send it. I'll write something, I'll write your paragraph tomorrow when I'm in the office. And I'll send it to you guys and say, you think this is okay for me to respond back on that? And then tomorrow, uh, I have recreation at five o'clock and then C P C on Monday, Monday night. And that's the start of it, guys.
Okay.
Uh, did you, oh, I also sent you something from the sidewalk, but it was at the, um. The firefighters thing that came up, was sitting up, one of the women is on that committee. And we, we were just talking back and forth. So she invited me to go to your sidewalk thing, but.
Thursday.
Yeah. You know, if you want me to go, I'll just tag along, just how you heard me.
Welcome to join. It's, it's, it's going to be a public vote before. So the first thing on my list is that the sidewalks of committee for EDC is being. I think I said it last week, last meeting this Thursday, um, at six thirty P M, uh, in the senior center, uh, the begging room, so.
Probably have the coffee.
Service, we got free coffee. Uh, and so, so we're looking to get input on, um. Any public projects that they're looking and interested in for the community for additional possible projects before we start actually. Taking them apart and, and trying to prioritize to the town. So looking forward to that, uh, Thursday night. Um, the, uh, I did mention briefly last week that traffic, uh, rules as well as sidewalk, as well as bike committee. Are all looking at e-bikes. They're all looking at, well, traffic rules is looking at golf carts. Trying to start brainstorming around the idea of what could be some kind of town policy for e-bike use and e-bike safety. Which I mentioned last week, is, is going to probably start from an educational basis rather than a policy and enforcement basis. Um, the bylaw review committee, uh, they're working really hard to get through the bylaws. I know there are a couple of specific bylaws that have been addressed by town departments planning specifically. To make sure we get it in line for the end of the year. So we're working towards that. Um, and, and they're doing a really great job there. The, the one thing that came up last night at, at town meeting was after the meeting, I was actually approached by, uh. A former resident of situat who, uh, used to live here, was there as a non-resident voter visitor. Um, he made the suggestion to be aware of a couple of things. And I was talking to the bylaw review chair. Who brought up some of our discussion point that we passed two items yesterday at the bylaw, uh, bylaws, the animal bylaw and the textile bylaw changes. It was made aware to me by the chair yesterday that in our current bylaws. It states that when we make a bylaw change, we're passing it through town. There are certain actual statutes in our bylaw that we may not be doing a good enough job of meeting with regards to voting through, how we have to.
So this is, this is, this is the residents.
No, this is the chair.
The chair, uh.
Right. The chair of.
Chair of bylaw, okay.
Separated from a former resident, which is a semi-bylaw review. Different bylaw we did many years ago.
Okay, some term law.
Yeah, I apologize. So let me clarify. The chair of bylaw review.
Yeah.
Let me know after we took that vote yesterday, which was perfectly fine, that because it was part of a consent agenda. We may need to be thoughtful about how we pass bylaw changes going forward because there is a statute in our own bylaws about bylaw changes. What has to be done at public meeting when we made those votes.
But it's, okay.
I'll get more detail on it.
Yeah.
But I also need more bylaw changes at our next.
Okay, yeah, 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 more details to see what we did, okay.
That's coming out about it. Uh, and then finally, beautification commission, uh, I just want to mention that they worked really hard up on the board guy Lincoln.
Yep.
Their workers have put in, uh, old garden space up there is actually now pretty much complete and ready for next season.
That's so good.
Looks wonderful. And, uh, so if anybody has a doubt there, check it out. It's, it's really, they put a lot of effort into that and looks excellent.
And thoughtful.
They did a bridge in there.
Yeah, I had a bit on that.
That's what I have.
Sure, agree.
After, well, I have to go with my.
I don't want to worry about you.
No, you can go ahead.
I have no updates. We had a town meeting last night.
Yeah.
And, um, I've got a couple meetings this week. I have the veterans on. On Wednesday and. Sure, what happened this week, but I'm sure I have people.
You saw library capital coming forward soon. So that's some of the rest of the night. You are up.
Um, on the board, Higlin, and they did an awesome job, the crew, um, the beautification committee, so Mary, Della, Jean Marie and Sissy, they did awesome. They were there probably three weeks. Um, so what they've done is a wildflower garden on one side. And the other side is an herb garden right off the house, which, and they researched the herbs that like folks would use back in.
Back in the day, Wiccan days.
So the one thing they did, like, with, with herbs, we think they did.
No money, all herb.
Tobacco.
Ow.
We did not plant.
You can grow tobacco in the winter.
They did talk about it.
They still do it in winter, don't they?
They still do it, yeah.
Best survivor of the world.
So it's, it's beautiful and it's actually technically an adapta lot. That, yes, and I'm a co-adaptor of the adapta lot, so.
Congratulations.
I miss.
You're a copium.
I tried to find the adapta lot the best I could.
Oh, they lost their time, the air adoption.
So, um, and then I have Waterways, which is meeting, um.
Didn't they just cancel this?
Yeah, they did, but they're trying to reschedule for Thursday. I don't know. So, um. We should be getting the, like. Five-year plan that we asked for about a year ago, um, for the rates. And we also need to schedule a time for the hardware master building presentation as the final step. So I will reach out once, once after the meeting, I will send you when we can be, one of the, the, the.
Yes.
Um, and that's pretty much what I have, but I did open this meeting and I.
He's so glad he's got her back.
Oh, okay. I was just also wondering when we're gonna, um, I see on the contracts over twenty-five thousand dollars that we, that Joe approved some. For the facility separation cost calculation. Um, for all gates, so that must be moving along. So I'm going around when we're gonna see them back again.
So that's, that's Grantham Group that you might want to see back. This was a contract for design and engineering of the spaces. So that they could then size the correct HVAC equipment and get a price for breaking those.
Gosh, okay. So this is, we are moving along on our, of course, you need to do, they're gonna separate the building.
When they, when they went to, to figure out what they needed for HVAC and how to break it, they're like, what are you going to use it for? I'm like, uh.
Yeah.
So they had backup and stuff. But having Grantham Group come back in is on your agenda a little bit out.
Okay. Great.
Like December out or breaking out?
I, I put it out a little bit further just to give it a little time. Have you had, but, cause you have budgets, you should be pretty much done with budgets, like mid, uh.
It's a gin and jam.
Camera, yeah.
Camera.
Yeah. And then maybe at that point we'll have that, um, other information back.
Okay.
Are you checking the master planner?
Yeah, no, I get it.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we don't have any minutes, so.
No, no minutes, no more side words. Saying done, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that, should give them a second, uh, if you go all in favor of.